In approving the proposal would almost certainly, for example, result in a new development at Victoria and Thirty Third. Uh, it would provide a financial financially viable solution for societies like the Vancouver Alpin Club, and would open the club maintaining its presence in Vancouver. Uh, to be clear, the soci- the society's uh survival is at stake. Uh, but while the club's survival is an issue, there's also the greater Vancouver uh housing crisis, which is not news. Vacancy rates are low, rents are high, uh, and the proposed zoning um would add to the much-needed rental stock. The law of supply and demand means more rental supply equals more housing equals more affordability, full stop. If you dump four million homes onto the market at once, rental rates are gonna fall. The club taking advantage of the proposal zoning represents a win for the for the Vancouver Alpin Club. It would help to ensure longevity, and it would help to keep the historical society in Vancouver. It's a win for other Vancouver stakeholders, though. It provides continued future employment for its staff in a Vancouver location. It provides much-needed rental housing for those who commute to Vancouver from elsewhere, like police, nurses, teachers, and rejuvenates areas like Thirty Thirty Victoria by faci- facilitating creation of newer, modern, more inclusive neighborhoods that take advantage of diversity while implementing new direction- uh directions and green transportation. Passing the proposal exploits the cooperation of zoning participants. Uh, I, I, you know, a further delay sends a message that nothing needs to change, and I think approving the proposal is a message that the city of Vancouver is ready to provide wide-ranging certainty to parties who want to invest in its neighborhoods. This is a balanced proposal with a simple formula. Um, it results in an injection of rental stock that addresses a hous- a housing shortage, uh, and it 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 helps Vancouver as a whole. Um, I encourage council to just please move in a positive, a positive direction, uh, and delay no longer. Please approve the proposal. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, there are no questions for you, so I'll say thank you for calling in, and I'll move on to the next speaker, uh, who is Henry Luvert, speaker number nineteen.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Are you able to hear me?
Sure can. Uh, up to five minutes. Just wait a second, uh, Speaker, one second, please.
I'm sorry to interrupt you in an appointed procedure, but I'm getting three, four, five, six emails now from the public that are-
Yes, uh, I've spoken with the clerks, the YouTube feed is working, and they're just working on the WebEx forum, so we have informed folks by Twitter to uh move to the YouTube feed and help get the other one fixed, so.
Could we just advise for those folks that are not on Twitter if they're just asking what the um the link is for the YouTube feed? Is that possible?
Sure, I'll get the clerks to send the uh the links again, and um, uh, right. Thank you for bringing that. Okay, Speaker, please go ahead.
Okay, no, thank you for your time. Uh, my name's Henry. I'm a single father, um, raising two children. I've been um renting in Vancouver for the past four years. Uh, we we live in the Dunbar neighborhood. Um, I'm calling to uh oppose uh the proposed rental um proposals for a number of reasons. It's not that I'm I'm opposed to more rentals in general, I'm I'm opposed to what's being proposed in terms of how we go about creating that additional rental stock. Um, I think the first thing I wanna say is I just that uh I do agree with a number of comments about how this consultation was carried out. I mean, I didn't hear, I've been living here for four years with my two kids, and I didn't even hear about this proposal at all until I saw that Vancouver Sun article about a week and a half ago about that gentleman that was that that was unhappy with the proposal. Um, that's the first I'd learnt of it, and I spent a lot of my own time studying up on it, but it was it was already too late to be thoroughly engaged in the public consultation process. So if this ever, if this doesn't get uh approved by council and the mayor, um, I I, you know, I would encourage the staffers to 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 engage in more, to to the public more thoroughly. Um, I think, I think my my main problem as a renter is that the these proposals, particularly the ones uh for the low-density areas, do not really cater to the families like like myself. Like I have myself, uh, two kids, and I find that, you know, what we need is, you know, three-bedroom units with 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 car parking. You know, and I find all these proposals, like I I read a proposal on the weekend, it says that on 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 low-density areas, you can build four stories, uh, twenty units, and a- all you need is six to eight parking spots. That that's just not sufficient, uh, e- even though we're living close to a transit station and all that stuff, being able to go to my job, pick up my kids, run to errands on the weekends. Unless I'm living right next to a Skytrain station, these units that are being proposed, they just don't, they just don't really cater to the family renter pile, like myself and my friends and other other renter families that I met through the schools, you know, the schools and the local communities. Um, so if I I do recommend council that if we are going to go forward with it, and that future developments be allowed to have more larger units, like three-bedroom units or two-bedroom plus a den, plus adequate parking. Um, you know, there there's a, there there was a project that got approved a couple of weeks ago on Collingwood and Forty First. Half the units of these studios, I mean, I just don't, a lot of renters like myself, we just, we want to have more choices, but we just can't, we can't find, like like those units just don't cater to us. Um, I mean, that a project like that might make sense closer to a Skytrain station, close ma- maybe in downtown Vancouver, but it doesn't, it doesn't really, it doesn't really work for us. I mean, wha- what I would love to see, I I I heard, you know, councillor Swanson express a lot of concerns about land lifting prices. Um, you know, those land assemblies on Forty First and Wood, all those houses, in fact, right after you guys approved that project, the very next day, the realtor that sold that assembly put a huge sign out on the street saying the next four houses have now also been sold because you guys approved the one bef- the 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 one right next to it. And I called him, and he said, well, look, everyone there got an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar lift in their housing prices. Like that, like, to me, that's exactly the opposite of what we're trying to achieve, right? So it's great for the developers, but it's not great for renters like myself. So what I'd love to see, uh, you know, what I recommend is that to look at, we have so many single-family homes in Vancouver, and a lot of people need them like myself. It'd be great if these, some of these larger lots can be allowed to split into two, like the fifty-foot-wide lots can be split into two single-family homes, the duplexes are good. Um, or if you have a standard lot, so, you know, thirty-three foot wide, we split two houses, front and back, or duplex front and back. Um, it would allow a lot more rental stock for people that are looking for families that are looking, that that are living in the community and looking for rental. And and I would say from my own observation, the duplexes and the two smaller lots do not actually sell for more than a bigger single-family house. In fact, it sells for less. So it makes those s- uh, that 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 rental stock or that, if it if it's built for sale, a lot more affordable to a lot more people. So anyway, that that was one of the points I wanted to bring forward. Um, the other thing is, I think the four-story building on uh in the low-density area is just too disruptive. It's a very bold vision, but it's very disruptive to me, even for myself, and my neighbors that I've talked to about this proposal. Like, we signed up for a lower-density neighborhood for our families, where we can come out to play on the streets and interact with our neighbors, not to have so many cars, the cars parked all over the streets, too many people walking around, higher density. So that, I think the six stories on Main Arterio is probably, in terms of that level of density on Main Arterio, it's like that level of density there is probably more appropriate, but for for single-family residents that are currently in the lower-density areas, I think their desires and wishes about serenity, preparing, preserving the heritage and character of our neighborhood should be um should be kept in mind. And so tho- tho- I think, I think the four-story buildings is too is too aggressive, too bold. I think the townhomes are probably okay, but those 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 four-story buildings, the units are too small. They lack parking, and they just, they just, it's it's very disruptive to the neighborhood. The the other point I I just wanna make is, uh, there there have been a lot of comments about Dunbar is a dying community. You know, the schools are, the report says that the schools are running out of children.
Speaker, you're you you are uh over time, so I'm just gonna have to thank you for speaking with us this evening. Oh, that's okay, it's my fault cheering, so, great. Thanks for calling in tonight, and I'm gonna move on to the next speaker as you have no questions. Um, this uh speaker number twenty is Henry Hahn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Uh, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Sure. Thank you. So, uh, just first off, acknowledge that I'm on the traditional and ancestral non-seeded territory, the Coast Salish people, the Squamish, Tsleuk and Musquee Impersonations. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thanks staff for the thorough data-driven presentation a few nights ago. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Vancouver, and had a current single-family homeowner in the West Side on a block that would be impacted by this zoning proposal, and I'm speaking in support of the policy. And let me start by saying, you know, this, everyone's, there's a lot of, um, I think, fear-mongering. This policy doesn't create rental apartments. It it creates the bare minimum conditions for the market to build rental product. I've spoken to people in the development industry and listening to those here uh a few days ago. You know, I can tell you that four-story market rental product's probably not gonna get built. Um, there's just not enough density to make the economics work with the cost of single-family lots. An example, and a real-world example is on my block that's Blue Zone. Several of our block owners, I've met with five parties over the last two years under various programs, brokers and developers. There was a program that's now been phased out several years ago that allows rezoning for, I believe, four-story rentals. The pricing that we were presented as owners was several hundred thousand dollars below market value. In anticipation of the current proposal, we've uh spoken to a few others, and they've presented, if this policy passes, some numbers. And the so-called land lift that everyone is talking about is roughly ten percent above the current market value. That's the minimum, in my opinion, to encyler to sell, certainly nowhere near enough to create rampant speculation. If you're looking at ten or even fifteen percent price lift, the cost of buying and selling, realtor fees, property transfers tax, carrying costs, property tax, isn't gonna net a speculator a positive return. As I said, this policy only creates the condition, and ultimately homeowners that don't wanna sell, and let me tell you, an assembly is not an easy feat to achieve, don't have to sell, quash any prospect for an assembly. You know, the daily hive, a lot of media have been posting stories about the rise in rents and drop in vacancy rates. While we had a bit of a reprieve during the pandemic, uh, we saw the rate go from under one percent, I think, up to maybe high twos. We know pressure and demand is coming back as we return to normal. This is not a policy for today, but rather a policy to address where the city will be in three, five, ten years from now. Immigration, refugee citizens to Canada, IRC has revised their levels plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. At four hundred thousand for this year, four hundred and eleven thousand and four hundred and twenty-one thousand net new immigrants to Canada in twenty twenty-three. That's one-point-two million people coming to this country. Uh, and they actually noted on their recent call that they're gonna hit their target this year of four hundred thousand immigrants. I can tell you the levels plan for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-seven will probably be the same or higher. I don't know the exacts, but I can tell you the majority of international immigrants intended destinations are major urban centers with thriving diasporas like Vancouver, Toronto, Montreal. So we can expect many thousands of immigrants to Vancouver proper, and these numbers are exclusive into provincial migration numbers where BC has generally netted out during the pandemic and over the past decade. The singular policy won't solve affordability. I'm not an economic specialist, but from my Econ one-on-one course, price moves based on supply and demand. Our house supply and affordability crisis is policy-induced market failure. I heard a number of people asking this to be referred back to staff. Can we make things prettier? Can we address this, or can we address that? We are in a crisis. We need housing. We are running out of time. People are talking about duplexes, laneways, or townhomes. That is a drop in the bucket. I get leaflets all the time. I call it fear-mongering from our local residents association. The majority are the five percent who own and fear any negative impact on their way of life. This proposal's gonna impact a small number of single-family owners in the greater scheme of things, as we're only talking about Arterio. If protecting this minority number of homeowners' way of life is more important than building a city for the vast majority of Vancouverites today and future of Vancouverites tomorrow, then this council is bowing and setting precedent to the worst form of NIMBYism. This isn't radical. This is truly incremental policy zoning. Uh, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, for being right on time, and there are no questions for you, but I'll thank you for calling in and move to the next speaker. Thanks so much. Council speaker twenty-one is withdrawn. Uh, speaker twenty-two out of eighty-nine, Roberta McDonald. Speaker number twenty-two.
Hello, everybody. You hear me okay?
Sure can. Five minutes, please.
Great. Um, I feel like applauding the previous speaker. Thank you for um speaking to a lot of what I've also been feeling, reading a lot of what's happening with this. Um, so again, my name is Roberta, and I live in Kipalano. I'm a renter. I support this project. I live on a block that is pretty unique and pretty incredible. Uh, we live in an um a three-story rental that's a little bit beyond our means, but we stay here because the neighborhood is amazing. Um, there are five single-family homes on the same block as us. We know them. We say hello to them. We're nice neighbors. We um pick up the litter on their on their lawn and say hi to their kids. We're not, we're um, around the block from us, there's a wonderful little Italian cafe. In front of us, I can actually see our neighbors who own condos that face Broadway. It's an incredible place to be, and I feel very fortunate to be here, and it's possible in other parts of the city. I don't think people need to be so scared of renters or rental buildings, like ruining their neighborhood. Um, we're people too, and we matter. And I just wanna add that we won the lottery to move into, and it was indeed a lottery, four hundred people applied. Thirty were selected to live in housing at um East Second and Main, in artist housing. Um, we decided not to do it because we didn't wanna live in eight lanes of traffic and constant noise and no trees, and I literally had a panic attack when we went to see the suite. Um, so this is the kind of buildings that are being made, and we're being lauded into the public as being incredible options, but we're actually um running a deficit living where we are now, even though it's an incredible neighborhood. So I did really urge you to think of fifty percent of the population and what this would mean for renters if you make more buildings available on leafy streets, and if there's another heat dome, good lord, you know, we need housing that um people aren't gonna die in. So, you know, thank you for giving me the time. I didn't pre- I didn't prepare a proper presentation. I'm not as lucid as everyone else here, but um, I just, um, I really urge you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. Um, there are no questions for you. I appreciate you uh calling in today and contributing to the debate. Um, we have uh speaker number twenty-two, three, Craig Gay.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Great, thank you. Yes, my name is Craig Gay. Um, I am not a developer. I'm just a resident of the city who lives in a single-family home, and I am opposed to the rental rezoning policy. Now, having said this, I I'm I'm sympathetic to the need for affordable rental housing. We have uh four young adult children, and we know only too well the difficulties they face finding housing. Yet I must still register my opposition to the proposed policy for its insensitivity to individual neighborhoods. It seems to me to be a kind of one-size-fits-all solution that is rife with unintended consequences. It's almost like you're saying that in order to save the city, we're going to have to destroy it. Now, I live on a little street called Crown Crescent in West Point Gray. It's a small street, only a couple of blocks long. It was once voted the most beautiful street in Vancouver. Now, our little street and the neighborhood we've managed to build up over the years will effectively be destroyed by the proposed development of six-story apartment buildings immediately to the suburbs along West Tent. While our little neighborhood could perhaps survive four-story development along West Tent, six stories will completely overshadow us. It'll be like living basically on on the stage of an amphitheater. This new policy basically drops the curtain on us. And again, I wish the new pol- well, I I wish the new policy could simply be more nuanced and more sensitive to individual neighborhoods. Now, adding insult to injury, although property owners along West Tent will at least be fairly compensated for uh acceding to the new development, those like us who are immediately adjacent to them are likely to see our property values plummet, in addition to losing our experience of neighborhood. Ouch. Now, I suppose you could say that residents like my family are just standing in the way of progress, and the loss of neighborhoods like ours is just the price we have to pay. Yes, I'm just wondering why only relatively few of us are being asked to pay this price and not all of us together. And finally, I think it's important to say that we were only alerted to the proposed policy by an attempted land assembly immediately behind us this past summer, which moved us to investigate how such a thing could be possible. Now, thankfully, the assembly failed, but were it not for the attempt, we would probably still be in the dark about the proposed policy. And so I want to urge you all to uh reject the proposed rezoning policy in favor of a revised policy that is uh much more sensitive to individual neighborhoods and that is basically more fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You do have a question. Uh, councillor Carr, please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Yes, uh, thanks so much for taking the time to speak to us. I'm wondering, you said that you were sympathetic to affordable rental, um, and then stated your concerns and impact on your neighborhood. Where do you think affordable rentals should be built in Vancouver?
Well, I mean, like I said, I think in our particular situation, just because of the landscape and then the the slope of the land and and the orientation and so forth, I think our neighborhood could handle uh four-story development, um, which I think would help, right? Uh, it's the six-story that's just uh just, you know, way out of scale for us. You you you'd have to look at it on a map to see, but um, the, this would completely overshadow us. I mean, literally, it would be like living on a stage of of an amphitheater. Um, and y- yeah, I mean, I'd, so it it's not that I'm opposed to the policy in general. I I just think it needs to be more nuanced.
Okay, go ahead. Finish that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay, so, so, you know, if you were in our, no, if you were in 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 our seats and and um had information given to you that said four-story rental rental is not affordable to build, the margins um on the investment in rental require, especially with the land costs as they are, um, require in order to get to a level of return on investment that makes it worth. So if that notion that you were armed with and and four-story isn't affordable, what what would, you know, where um, where would you put, for example, the six stories that maybe um a, you give enough return on investment to uh to enable the building?
Well, again, I, you're breaking up, so I'm, I think I caught a question. Um, and it's not really a question that I have a m- an answer to. I I just think that um the decision as to whether four or five or six stories needs to be adjusted to individual neighborhoods, to the geography, to the uh the orientation of sun, to the trees, to, you know, to all of the various individual um characteristics of 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 neighborhoods. So it it, and and the the problem with the policy is it's just, it's just this blanket thing that's sort of imposed upon a map um that doesn't take into consideration any of these local, you know, very specific um uh qualities. So I'm I'm not, you know, I I can't answer the question.
Okay, I I I get your point.
Thanks so much. Uh, you, uh, next question, councillor Dejanova.
No, what's that top one? Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, councillor Dejanova, you're up next.
Thanks so much. Um, I'm wondering, in in your comments, you had talked about specifically you and your neighbors and and sort of your proximity to West Tent, but I'm wondering if, you know, in planning for this, in your comments, in your presentation on planning for this, do you feel that the consultation that has been done is enough? Do you feel that something that you, you know, significantly impacts more than one application that would come to us um should be coming um through something like the Vancouver Plan? Or do you think that, you know, there are enough people that we have been able to reach out to in this time period here who agree with six stories? I mean, some might think there should be eight to ten stories. Might be others who think that there should only be single-family homes. Either way, do you feel that there has been enough consultation, considering how you've shared that you've come to know of this tonight?
Well, no, I would say no, um, just because, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have known about it at all uh had it not been for the uh attempted land assembly uh this last summer. Um, and, yeah, I mean, we were horrified when we uh, you know, I went onto the city website and and uh, you know, eventually was, it was able to find this this proposed policy. And it was a shock, and and we've been uh, you know, telling our neighbors about it. None of them have heard of it. I mean, nobody we've talked to knew anything about this. Um, so I don't think, I mean, you may think your consultation process is working, but I don't think it is.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering my question. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, that's it for questions. So I'll move on to speaker number twenty-four, Penny Noble. Penny Noble, speaker number twenty-four.
Speaker twenty-four is not on the line.
Thank you. Uh, speaker number twenty-five is uh Nathan Davidovich.
Hello?
Hi there. Sure can. Up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, there's been many articles written about these proposals, many knowledgeable professionals, including professors from UBC, SFU, KPU, and uh, uh, and most of them I agree with. Uh, uh, there is an article uh by Scott Heine, who used to work for the city, and he and he has ten different points, and I'll just talk about uh point number seven, uh, which states a policy that discriminates between neighborhoods with community plans and those neighborhood without. Um, surely if an apartment uh can be built at Twenty-Sixth and Dunbar, it should be allowed to be built at Twenty-Sixth and Oak, but there is no consistency. As the previous speaker says, one side it all, and uh it does, just doesn't work that way, unfortunately. Um, you know, all these community plans that were approved by Vision, uh, they are all bad plans, and they they will force onto neighborhoods. And uh you have to remember, in case members of council do not understand, they are, these, those plans are not bylaws. They are just plans. Any city council can change them just in a matter of few minutes. Or tell the staff, hold on, we 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 don't want you to proceed on these plans and 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 accept rezoning applications and so forth. You know, that was already challenged in the court, and the city of White Rock, the new council, uh, won. The developers took them to court and uh tried to say that the previous council uh approved certain regulations and so forth. So, you know, uh, so this is the plan, this is the problem. We have staff that are uh uh following the old Vision council uh directions and policies and and rules, and uh, you know, it's it's, this is not the way things are in Vancouver, especially uh uh when uh they decided many years ago not to follow the US model, but to uh Vancouver to follow the UK model of planning and development. And uh this, it seems to have changed under Vision for some, for some strange reason, you know. Um, but, I mean, the city, you see, uh, uh, um, we need public rental housing, and I support you, Mr. Mayor, in in uh helping us getting uh more housing. You've probably got more in the three years that you've been in power than in all the ten years of Vision, you know. And uh, but, I mean, we need the the BC government to, uh, not developers to 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 buy land and develop uh housing. I mean, look at Singapore, eighty percent of the housing is owned by the government. There's no reason why the provincial government cannot buy the, these uh 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 Arterio uh uh lots on our, on major arterios and and develop them as needed uh by by each neighborhood and and do it by neighborhood by neighborhood instead of doing it one size fits all. Um, you know, the 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 public hearings should be held in the neighborhoods. I remember fifty years ago when Arab Phillip was the mayor, there was a public hearing in the Champlain Heights uh uh Community School. And that's the way those, it should be done. Uh, again, you know, it's it's the fault of Vision, all these bad policies. And uh, uh, you know, uh- And, uh, uh, you know, uh, I think, uh, you know, maybe, uh, we should call you also the GSD Mayor, the Get Stuff Done Mayor, and that's what the new title of the new mayor of New York City is, because you do care about housing and, uh, but, uh, it's the provincial government, you know?
Thank, thank you so much. That is your five minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you for, for calling in this evening, and there are no questions for it. Again, thanks for participating.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, twenty-six, Natasha Schulman.
Hi, can you hear me?
You're good. Uh, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great. I'll be quick. Um, I've, my name's Natasha Schulman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, I've actually lived for more than sixteen years in West Point Gray. I live in an off arterial in what is a new rental zone as defined by the plan. Um, and I'm among the people who live across the street from what are two-story homes now, which will potentially be replaced by five-story buildings with six stories on the arterial. Um, I am absolutely in favor of density, um, yet I'm opposed to the current plan. Um, I, I feel like there has really not been enough community involvement or consultation. Um, like the speaker a couple moments before, I actually found out about the rezoning through a change.org petition. Um, it was completely random and, um, I've also gone door-to-door to talk to my neighbors about it and no one's informed. Um, no one seems to understand the implications, um, even folks who are straight across the street from me who potentially, you know, could be selling their homes, um, for the purpose of land assemblies. Um, so I feel like we haven't been given enough data or opportunity to just share an informed opinion. Um, I've learned a tremendous amount, um, attending the meeting on, on Tuesday and then today. I feel like I've, you know, I've, I've expanded my knowledge and understanding of all of this, you know, tenfold. Um, but I don't feel like, like anyone else in my neighborhood, you know, who, who I talk to on a regular basis, um, really has this understanding. Um, I really, I think that the crux of my, my issue is that I, I really agree with, uh, several of the earlier speakers who just talk about the livability of a neighborhood and a feeling of community, um, that our neighborhoods can possess. And I feel like, um, I feel like that needs to be a priority in how we look at the rezoning. Um, I certainly have, um, sensitivity and understanding about affordability of, of building, yet I just, I feel like we've gotta think more creatively. I'd also, just for the record, be totally open to rezoning more than just the arterial one block in. I think there's a need for density to go throughout our neighborhoods. Um, I was really moved by the speaker on Tuesday who talked about, the single father talked about wanting to live off arterials. Um, but I'd love to see it be more creative, more four-story, uh, multiplexes, townhomes, um, density that's, um, that's created with the idea and kind of a focus on community and building a sensitive neighborhood. Um, I'd also just say that I'm really concerned, um, with the traffic issues. Uh, there's already tremendous congestion that's overwhelming the arterials in this area. Um, and since amenities are really limited, it's hard to imagine that new residents in the area could live car-free. Um, add to this, kind of the, the Jericho Lands development, which will totally, you know, um, remake our, this area, um, that, uh, we currently, you know, according to the planners, that development will more than double the number of residents in this area, um, thus further congesting the roads. And it's really unclear where that translink stop will be, uh, between Alma and UBC. And, uh, the Jericho Lands developer suggested that they're pushing for the stop to be in the middle of that development. So it feels like, you know, that there should be some clarity around that, um, about where, where are the stops gonna be, who, where's the transmission gonna be, um, before we just are, um, before we're really adding to the density or as we're adding to the density of this area. Um, and, and a side note, I, I, I do, I do just have kind of a general question, which is that it feels like the business district in Point Gray, um, I mean, for sure it's struggling, right? We used to have a grocery store, a meat market, cheese shop, toy store, uh, you know, Starbucks, Tim Hortons, um, many of businesses were not struggling for patrons and they closed. But, um, but they complained at the high rents and the taxes that drove them out. And so there's just a disconnect for me, um, and I, as just a, as just a resident in the area, um, and, and in Vancouver, I would really like to understand kind of how this whole plan works together in kind of building the vibrancy of our communities back together. Um, so anyway, my, in, in summary, you know, I just think neighborhoods are meant to really contribute to a sense of community and connection, and I'd like to just see planning and zoning that prioritizes that. So thank you for your time and thank you for all of your work on this, and, um, I'm really appreciating everyone who's shown up at these public hearings.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's your five minutes. I don't see any questions for you, so thank you again for participating and gonna move on to the next speaker. Um, speaker number twenty-seven, Konstantinos Sidropoulos.
Uh, speaker twenty-seven is not on the line.
Thanks very much. Uh, speaker number twenty-eight, Bruce Herzer.
Speaker twenty-eight has withdrawn.
Thank you very much. Uh, speaker number twenty-nine, Patrick Condon.
Hello, members of council. First, I want to thank you for all your attention to this issue and the hours that you spend listening to citizens. It's quite moving. Uh, but I want to speak against this motion, uh, tonight because if passed, I believe you're going to miss a, a golden opportunity to stop land price inflation. I believe you will miss an opportunity to shift what would otherwise go into the already overstuffed pockets of land speculators and direct it into affordable rents for our crucial city service workers. I want to draw your attention to the Fed. On May eighteenth, council debated a motion submitted by councillor Boyle, named reducing barriers and deepening affordability for nonprofit co-op and social housing in every neighborhood. That motion would have allowed citywide options for increased density for rental units, very similar to this proposal, but only for nonprofit providers who would reserve at least thirty percent of those units for households making median wages or below. That proposal was roundly defeated. Now we see before us a similar proposal with a major difference. Here we see a citywide proposal to allow market rate rentals with effectively no guarantee of affordable housing pegged to average household incomes. This unfortunately will only inflate land prices to the point where developers will find it impossible to provide units renting at affordable rents. If in fact this motion is intended to increase affordable housing in our city, it would be very inconsistent if council were to pass this motion, which specifically avoids guaranteeing affordable housing for wage-earning families after rejecting councillor Boyle's May eighteenth motion. For this and other reasons, I suggest that council return this report to the planning department for consideration in the citywide planning process, such that this glaring inconsistency between councillor Boyle's motion of May eighteenth, which at least guaranteed some degree of concrete affordability in return for a percentage of units priced at a level that would allow our surface, service workers to afford them. This motion offers no assurances in this regard whatsoever and will add more fuel to the out-of-control dumpster fire, which is our land price inflation conflagration. I also, in closing, want to draw your attention to a letter sent to you by Scott Heine, mentioned previously, a man with thirty years of experience in the Vancouver Planning Department as head urban designer. He has detailed ten very crucial design flaws in this proposal. His letter is also available on the City Hall Watch blog. Please reconsider this motion. Um, uh, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Uh, you have questions, councillor Swanson?
Yeah, thanks so much, Patrick. Um, you were saying that there's not much affordability in here, but the plan actually does talk about affordability, like by having a six-story, there could be a certain amount, twenty percent at a certain level of affordability. And what do you think about that? It's just not enough?
My understanding is that the, the motion as written doesn't guarantee that. It says in certain circumstances that may be possible, and that makes it very distinct from the Boyle motion, which only gave the additional density in return for affordability.
So if you wanted to... Sorry.
Go ahead.
If you wanted to, if you were the king and you wanted to guarantee affordability, how would you do that?
I would return to, uh, providing, uh, nonprofit, uh, housing providers with the additional density and, and let them have the additional density, but only in return for affordability at some, at some number, let's say fifty percent would be. The calibration on that number should have something to do with wanting to prevent land price inflation, so it has to be a careful calibration. This is exactly what Cambridge has done, for example, working hand-in-hand with their nonprofit providers to figure out what the proper calibration would be in terms of additional density on the one hand and the degree of affordability for average wage earners on the other.
What about the argument that if we don't do this, we'll just get condos?
Uh, well...
Which will be more expensive than rental?
Uh...
Sorry?
Uh, no, I believe, this is a complicated issue, and my short answer on that one is that rental-only zoning is a tool that we should also use. But at the same time, I think people that I, like Ian Crook, for example, a retired banker, says that at this stage of history, uh, market rentals as a, as a, uh, as an investment product are for some financial entities competitive with condominium projects. It's just a different formulation of how those profits are determined and over what period of time. And this is, this is happening throughout Canada and in other parts of the world as well, that because market rental prices have gone up so, uh, so quickly, the value of a rental, a market rental prod, project is, uh, competitive now with, uh, with condominium product.
So you think that if we did nothing, we could, we would still have rental as opposed to condo?
Well, I think it would help to have rental-only zoning and when, where you have rental, rental parcels that are currently, uh, rental only at the moment, those should be protected by, by rezoning those for, uh, for rental only, which is, which is a new authority given to the city of Vancouver by the, by the provincial legislature, which we haven't employed now. That would certainly help. And I think the tool of rental-only zoning should have gotten much more consideration before this was on the table.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You, uh, thank you. Councillor Hardwick's up next.
Hi, Patrick.
Hello.
Um, what would you say to this? The issue is often framed as if it's about more housing or less, but that's not the issue. It's growth that is compensated versus growth that isn't compensated.
Well, I think you'll need to elaborate your question a little bit more, councillor Hardwick, for me. I'm not sure where, what, what, what the, what the...
The, the argument is that this is giving density away because it's, it's being justified by, because it's rental. And as you described in, in your, uh, allusion to Ian Crook's analysis of the performance is it's just a different angle for still making money. It's just making money in a kind of way, in a different manner.
Yes, now I understand the question. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, it, it may be known to some members of council that I recently put out an article, and it's not the first of its kind, that charted the inflationary, uh, pressures that are consequent to parcels of land in the city that have moved from, from their previous designation to a rental-only designation at a higher density. And the issue that was, well, staff has stated that they don't anticipate, uh, increases in land value as a consequence of this, but the evidence is, the cases are there that show that that is, that is not correct. Certainly in these anecdotal instances, there's been a doubling of the, of the, the land value as a consequence of moving a land, uh, zoning to, to allow for, um, market rentals. So, so that's what, basically what is, I think, at issue here is does this, uh, does this motion increase land value? And I would argue that it very much does increase land value to the point where developers will be unable to provide housing at prices that the average workers can afford. And the only way to keep those land values down, if you want to have rental units in, uh, to, to, to be built throughout the city, which is something that I, that I very support, is to make sure that it's affordable. And you can make sure that it's affordable by offering it only to nonprofit providers. And that, the, the experience shows is a, is a means by which you can prevent the outrageous inflation in land prices and make the projects pencil out for nonprofit providers.
So you would agree to the, the, the basic premise, and you alluded to it as adding fuel to the dumpster fire of affordability, um, that every time we do one of these rezonings, in fact, what we are doing is inflating the land values and making it more expensive, whether we're, we're building, uh, rental or strata?
Yes, and you, I agree with that and that the means by which to achieve what is your common objective, all, all members of council have agreed that they want to do this, the, the means to prevent land value inflation is to insist on affordability rather than zoning for affordability, insist on it. And that's, that's to only, a way to do this is to only add additional density in return for an assurance of affordability that mitigates the tendency for land prices to inflate up to levels that the market would allow, even market rentals would allow, if you understand where I'm going.
I do. One of the earlier speakers, um, alluded to the fact, to zone capacity and the fact that, uh, the city over the last decade, dozen years has undertaken significant, uh, rezoning, which has more than doubled the assessed value of the, the property tax role within, or the property assessment role within the city. Do you see that? Um, do you see an opportunity then within the existing zone capacity to affect affordability?
One of the problems with that is that the existing zone capacity has already been affected by the, the dramatic inflation in land values. So the land values underneath the dirt, underneath, uh, buildings that have an existing, uh, zone capacity, uh, in the marketplace for that land, the, the market value of that land has already been affected by that already, that zone value, such that, uh, parcels on the arterials, which are currently zoned for four-story, four-story, uh, condo or rentals are already much more valuable than parcels two blocks in.
Thank you. That's the five minutes.
Thank you.
But councillor Carr has questions as well, as does councillor Weep.
Um, yeah, just, uh, a couple of, uh, questions. Thank you for coming, taking the time to, to speak to council on this. Uh, so on that last point you, you made around, um, increased land values on the, on the land that's already there, on arterials, the same, the same properties that we're talking about in this motion, um, that the land values has increased. You, in your opinion, have they increased, those land values increased to the point where that's why we're not getting development at that scale of zoning?
Uh, you mean, well, it, that's a complicated question.
It's not profitable. There's not enough return on investment.
Well, I, I think we're, I think you're already considering proposals throughout the city, for example, for four-story condominium development and sometimes with incentives for, for, uh, for rental, rental versions, but certainly four-story condominium development is something that you're seeing, uh, proposed and approved throughout the city. So the market is already delivering a, a substantial amount of housing. We may argue over whether it's enough or not. Uh, my, my larger point, councillor Carr, is that if we want to get affordability, uh, the, the products that are being delivered... uh, the the products that are being delivered are not affordable, whether they're condominiums or market rental. And if you take an existing uh, density level and allow only nonprofit providers the additional density, that helps their project pro forma in such a way. If you assume that those land values are going to stay still at least, that makes their project pro forma operate in a way that makes it affordable for rentals.
Right, okay. Um, that's, uh, affordability is certainly one of the issues that we're grappling with um, in this application. Um, the other that we're hearing a lot of speakers talk to though is height. Um, so I'm curious about your opinion. Um, can the height be lowered? Even if, and to get and to maintain affordability, as you say, even under circumstances where we may want only nonprofits um, to be involved or co-ops or whatever, but definitely not the the market sector, private sector. Um, can they build affordable um, rental housing at four stories?
That's a terrific question.
On the land.
Right, uh, that's a terrific question. And I would argue, I would offer that there are some, there are some six-story buildings now that are being built, wood-framed buildings on the arterial that are pretty good buildings. And they don't really have a negative impact on the neighborhood behind. I would also offer that there's some buildings in the residential areas, particularly in Kitsilano, which has a a great inventory of successful design experiments for higher density within the fabric of low-density neighborhoods. For example, I would point everybody to the project on Tenth and Vine, which has an FSR, using planner talk here, of close to two that is situated right next to uh, buildings that have an FSR of point five, so it's four times denser. However, it looks like a two-story building. It's actually a three-and-a-half-story building, but it looks like a two-story building. So I think that the points that Scott Heim points to in his wonderfully articulate presentation of his tendence is that there are much more subtle ways to do design within neighborhoods than a four-story box. So I would recommend that, I I would also, I would also support those speakers that say we need, we need a ne- we need a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach, councillor.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Councillor Asianova.
All right, I was on mute there. Um, thanks for your comments. I'm just, I'm going to, just, just considering, um, I do have a background in non- non-market housing and working with a nonprofit. In your suggestion, what is to say there's not a joint venture and a nonprofit, as so many of them are and have been in past? I'm not specifically talking about any one project. Are you in a joint venture, are used uh, in a capacity where they're not really yielding the profits? They may get some units out of this, but they're really a front for, you know, whoever's going to be holding most of the ownership or interest in the project?
Yes, that's, that that question comes up frequently, councillor. And it is within the capacity of to insist on permanent affordability in these units as a condition of approval. And there are various methods that that can be, that can be arranged. You're already in a conversation around Falls Creek South that very much implicates those issues. Your question also allows me to offer that there are a lot of good developers in our community who are capable of providing nonprofit housing, just as capable as they can provide for-profit housing. And how that often works in places like Vienna, for example, is that there's a fixed-price arrangement with the developer, which reduces their risk and get, and, you know, keeps their business running, and they have the appropriate amount of profit which would come out of a project, just like a market project would allow for. So uh, communities that have a very successful non-market housing sector usually employ their best developers. And here in Vancouver, we have almost the best developers in the world to participate in that, some of whom have spoken to you in similar terms.
And and I agree with that. I'm wondering, I mean, when we look at this again, and and in the context of what you've shared, would you suggest that the city, though, and it has taken this on in the past, and as I'm trying to consider this in the context of what's before me for public hearing, not in greater policy, but how this can, what it might look like? Do you think that it's important to allow and empower those developers and nonprofits to find each other? Or do you think that should happen through the Vancouver Affordable Housing? Um, I mean, through Vaha, through our, our, or Vahaf, I should say now, both of those?
Yeah, well, that would, the tech, the technical issues of that would be, of course, for you to decide, and it's be- beyond my pay grade to 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 offer the mechanical solutions. I would only say that it is my considered opinion that the city has a tremendous opportunity to solve that problem if they take, if the c- if the council and city staff become willing to engage this problem directly by using the zoning tool as the means for affordability. What you ha- what you often feel constrained by is the absence of of provincial and federal need to solve that, this problem, and that is unfortunate, and I regret that as well. But the power that the city has, that it doesn't, in my view, use effectively yet, nor has it needed to up until the last fifteen years in the midst of this housing crisis, is the zoning power. Whenever you change the zoning on a parcel of land, you create immense instant wealth, that you have the option and the opportunity to decide who is the beneficiary of that new wealth. Will it be the land speculators?
And I have one more question for you. So I I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut you off, but I appreciate your comments. I'm wondering, on the question of, and I asked this in the beginning, and I'm considering it in the context of what we're doing here. But last term, there was a move made on duplex homes, and it was a blanket policy in certain zones across the city, no limits, no numbers. And now we're seeing, quite recently, there was an article in the Georgia Strait, home bought up for one point three million dollars, older home, um, on a single-family detached lot, you know, thirty-three by one twenty-two, one twenty-five. And a duplex home was built, or a duplex was built, and each side of that duplex sold for one point six. Then everything in that neighborhood that was, you know, up for sale had a rendering of a duplex, and the prices were rated within two years exponentially. Are you concerned about that with this policy and not considering the context?
I'm totally concerned about that, and I know exactly those those instances that you speak of. And that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about, councillor, is that city council, when making those decisions in the interests of affordability, and I remember the debate about the duplexing, and there was a lot of hope it would produce affordability. And yet, we are all disappointed that it has not, that it has seemed to influence uh, essentially land price value in such a way that not only are the products that that are provided not affordable, but the surrounding areas have become even less affordable too. This is the perfect demonstration of what I'm talking about, that if you can get control of that land price inflation by by insisting on affordability, you're ha- you're halfway.
We are well over, we're well over time, so I just want to thank you for calling in this evening, and I'm gonna have to move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much. Thank you. Um, councillor, the next speaker is Stefan Brunnhoff, number thirty, speaker number thirty, Stefan Brunnhoff.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
My name is Stefan Brunnhoff. I am a retired architect. Having practiced in Vancouver all my career, I live in Kitsilano in a single-family house, older nineteen thirty-five house, Rebrino. I'm opposed to the proposed zoning changes as they're currently stand while applauding many of its intentions. I regret the information presented by by the city at Tuesday's meeting was not available to the public prior to that meeting. People could have had more time to respond to that updated nation. Many of us residents in affected areas were also not notified of this potential zoning change. Why was that? The Vancouver Charter stipulates that parties affected by zoning and development amendments are to have a fair opportunity to understand and respond to such proposals. I am happy that the city is trying to encourage rental housing. It does look doubtful from what developer, builder respondents have said that the twenty below-market value housing will gain much traction with them, even with the six-story inducement. Yes, we will have more rental, but the rental costs will still be prohibitively high for many, especially those earning minimum wage or even the the new living wage estimated at twenty dollars an hour. I would encourage the city to work at finding more ways that rentals will fall into a more affordable category, as Patrick has just outlined. Mark White, also speaker number one, spoke to this point. I know that is not easy to achieve, but little worthwhile is easy, is easy to achieve. I'm concerned about current homeowners whose properties will be negatively affected by nearby builds in the RR zones as well as the C2 zones. If there's a four or six-story build on the north side of an artery, and the land slopes down to the north, there'll be considerable shadowing north of any project. Would we, as a city, be willing to incur the cost of compensating the losses suffered by these properties in any way? And if not, why not? One of the stated aims of higher density is to create a greater sense of community. Given the building types proposed, I contend that they would diminish the sense of community hoped for. My graduating thesis was research and design a half-block project with a stated intent of creating community in neighborhood. Critical, critical to making this happen uh, is the development of what I call in-between spaces. These are spaces that are reasonably sizable and are inserted between uses such as retail, commercial, small industry and housing, or within housing units, where unplanned things can happen, a place where social interaction is free to occur, and for kids to have a place to play. The buildings proposed do not have any of these qualities, as far as I can see. They are typical apartment types with corridors only for internal access. I have many friends that live in these kinds of buildings, and there's little, very little connection between owners. There would be little and little and actual space for community-building interactions in the building type proposed. Vancouver is considered one of the loneliest cities. These types fail to address this. Ironically claiming that they they will encourage the formation of community, I very much doubt it. Uh, mixed-use assemblies in the sea, the sea zones threaten in their design to make for a duller, more dehumanized city texture. The diverse, sometimes funky complexity of retail streetscape, such as Drive, Fourth Avenue, Main Street, gas town parts of Broadway, are being placed by larger-scale retail uniformity. There'll be less small owners of shops and businesses. Long unbroken aluminum and glass storefront sections are becoming the norm. We have lost and potentially will lose more variety, character, and complexity. Will the city address this with considered design guidelines? Or will we have more bleak streetscape, uh, streetscape such as, such as in the Olympic Village and other developed areas? I'm enthusiastic about the intent of the city and applaud the work that has gone into this so far. But the proposed zoning has not gone far or deep enough. It's a good start, but it needs more nuanced, nuanced response to its stated intent of providing affordable rent, and encouragement towards community stakeholder participation, and hopefully a built character that is not only utilitarian and green, but beautiful. The danger is that we give in to a, give in to impatience.
Thank you so much. We're, we're at the five-minute limit, but you do have questions, some councillors, Councillor Frye, please go ahead. Councillor Frye?
Man, I'm talking away with my, my tone mute. Uh, thanks, speaker. I'm so, just unpacking a bit of what you said, I'm hearing you correctly. You do, you see an opportunity for more explicit design guidelines to sort of animate the the retail storefrontages and and make them a little less banal and more lively?
I think that would be a fabulous design exercise and problem to solve for the the design community. I mean, we have tremendous designers here and a lot of skill and goodwill, and I think if that was applied, um, you know, their way forward uh, to just having these generic solutions that are kind of boring.
A- and I certainly think that that's an application that could be incorporated and is certainly worth considering a- as we contemplate this kind of work in the C2s. Now, I want to also go back to you, you obviously mentioned you're an architect, and that achieving affordability wasn't going to be easy, but nothing worthwhile ever is, and I totally appreciate that. Do you have any suggestions as to how we could better, um, and, you know, from a professional point of view, how can we achieve the affordability?
Well, it's a bit outside of my wheelhouse, but I think the previous leader, Speaker Patrick Condon, uh, had had lots of good points in terms of how that could be approached with the various stakeholders, the city, nonprofits, et cetera. Um, you know, the affordable housing issue wasn't something I dealt with in my own career. There's plenty out there. I did, I think there's lots of ideas. Uh, sorry, I just can't contribute anything. I think people like.
I was, I was really looking for a sort of an architectural kind of solution, and, because there have been some pieces in here that contemplate, you know, for instance, um, the the more boxy formats could achieve better savings in 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 the built form, you know, through that architectural approach to achieve affordability. So I wondered if you could weigh in on that as, as a professional?
Yeah, boxy uh, can work. I mean, I've seen Renaissance buildings in Italy that are boxy and that are just gorgeous. Um, so the design of that, I think, is workable. It's just a matter, I think, of making um, making them uh, have spaces in them that are amenities to people, that actually create the community that we would like to see. Um, yeah, it's, it's a real trade-off game, um, you know, between price of construction and uh, price of building in potential amenities, you know. And is there a way of of finding mon- money or financing sources for these extra kind of potential amenity spaces that would really contribute, uh, that are perhaps outside of the box? Um, I wish I had an answer to that, um, but again, I think there is a lot of creativity out there, and it would be worth exploring.
Okay.
Councillor Hardwick, up to five?
Thank you very much. Um, I wanted to pick up on the first, uh, the theme about loneliness in cities, which was something that you you spoke about early in your, in your presentation. Uh, were you familiar with the Vancouver Foundation's work on urban alienation? I think it was in twenty twelve and twenty seventeen that that looked at the role of housing typology and the, and gar- oriented architecture and its effect on loneliness and sense of community?
No, I'm not familiar with that one, but, um, you know, certainly that's something that has been studied and documented in in other countries extensively. It's uh, fairly well documented. I'm glad to hear that Vancouver has done a study as well.
Was the Vancouver Foundation, actually, and was something that came up recently in the context of Falls Creek South, but really talking about urban alienation and and loneliness as being affected by housing typology. As an architect, I thought you might have some sensitivity to that.
Oh, yeah, I'm very sympathetic to that. And, um, you know, in my own work, uh, you know, that is, that's very key. I'm always trying to connect people and try to eliminate the sort of, uh, build barriers and sense of alienation, I think, uh, that a lot of modern architecture unfortunately poists on us. Um, not all, certainly, but uh, there are some, you know, too many examples of that, I'm afraid. Uh, so I think it's a challenge to us as an architectural community to to deal with this and not be lured by the sexiness of the latest modernist trend. Uh, let's, let's look at the social cost of some of these things, and, you know, what what really supports community and people's spirits, uh, rather than, uh, you know, something that'll get into the magazines.
So tying that back then to the nuance of neighborhoods, as you identified, it's important as we go through an exercise as comprehensive as we're contemplating here to be considering nuance and livability, urban alienation in our approach. in our approach and certainly not a one-size-fits-all model, but as you emphasized, nuance.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, with the proposal as it stands, it looks like it's more, you know, it has a bit of a sledgehammer all over the city approach. But I, you know, I can see it developing more incrementally and that there wouldn't be, you know, long canyons of five, six-story structures developed. So I hope, you know, there would be nuancing of this plan as it develops to of all of that.
So incrementalism and do you have any sense of pace of change associated with that incrementalism?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the pace needs to be to be healthy. That's a very good question. I wish I knew. We know we have demand, there's pressure on us in terms of incoming population, people needing rental. You know, we do have to move on it. I'm just not sure. Again, that's a bit outside of my wheelhouse.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your insights.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. That's it for questions for you. Appreciate you phoning in. Councillor, we're at eight oh three. I suggest maybe we go through a couple of speakers and then take a break. So let's go for Speaker number thirty-one and thirty-two, and then we'll take a ten-minute break. Speaker thirty-one is Kelly Tuleko.
Kelly Tuleko, I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes. Yes, again, please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councillor. I am Kelly Tuleko, a Vancouver resident, and I am opposed to this proposal on the grounds that residents have not received correct and sufficient notice. Living in a congested area of East Vancouver, I'm very familiar with the routines of rezoning communications, signage, affected site and postcard notice to nearby residents. Yet neither of these practices was followed in the lead-up to tonight's hearing. When questioned about this in the early October public hearing, planner Edna Cho stated that postcard notice is sent to individual property owners on specific rezonings, but not for citywide rezoning. In other words, if a rezoning affects relatively few people, they are notified by postcard. If it affects a whole lot of people throughout the city, they are not notified. This practice defies logic and common sense. It might even defy common law. I refer you to a memo you as councillor received on March thirty-first, twenty twenty from then-city manager Sadhu Johnston attaching an earlier memo to council of December eleventh, twenty eighteen from then-city manager Gil Kelly and city solicitor Frances Connell. That memo outlines his role in the rezoning process. After summarizing council's duties under the Vancouver Charter, solicitor Connell and then-city manager Kelly provided several paragraphs on common law duties. I quote as follows. Courts have considered questions about council participation in the rezoning process. Court decisions apply certain basic principles, but decisions often depend on the circumstances of the particular case. The following six common law duties can be distilled from these decisions, unquote. And I now quote the fourth bullet point in this section. Quote, procedures related to public hearings must be consistent and clear. If a usual procedure is deviated from in a particular case, a court may find the deviation improper. The rationale is that even though the Vancouver Charter contains no legal requirement for the procedure, procedures once established can create, quote, legitimate expectation, unquote, by the public that these practices will be followed. By way of example, staff notifies property owners within an approximate two-block radius of a site at least fourteen days before the public hearing of proposed zoning amendments, even though the Vancouver Charter does not require such notification, unquote. Mayor and Councillor, in the same way that you have been urged to take note of the world around us, you consider the city's response to climate change and housing solutions. I urge you to take note in the world and the city around us of growing distrust of government, citizen disengagement, polarization of the citizenry and the influence of special interest groups outside the laws and norms of civic discourse. Please do not proceed with this report until all affected residents and business owners have been correctly and legally notified. If, in the interests of expediency, you proceed without due process, you will be joining history's dubious throng of leaders and enablers who discounted the people they were elected to serve. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Councillor Herbert has questions for you. Councillor Herbert?
Oh, thank you very much. So let me get this straight. Your argument is that there has been insufficient knowledge as a notice on this and that it has been inconsistent with historical practice. And since it's deviating from the norm of that historical practice that has been established, precedents that have been established over time, that that would potentially leave us open for legal challenge at worst and exacerbating the loss of public trust at best?
That is correct. That is my point.
Thank you. I'm glad that's clear. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks. We have, that's it for questions for you. Really appreciate you calling in tonight. We have Speaker number thirty-two, Stuart Smith.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Wonderful. Thank you. Dear Mayor and Councillor, I'm speaking in support of the streamlining rental policy. I'd like you to know it's not enough. I'd like to remind you that it's been watered down dramatically by people who already own the whole of the housing they'll ever need in life. Despite being watered down, many of those same people are here in force, as always, to kill anything that threatens the sanctity of the original one-size-fits-all land use policy, single-family zoning. It's incredibly inequitable enough to force tenants to breathe arterial air, listen to arterial noise day and night and risk death or dismemberment by car every time they or their children go out. And yet, it seems this is the best we can do. We aren't being asked if we would prefer to live on other streets. We aren't being asked if we should have the rights to all the streets of the city. We aren't being asked where we would prefer to live at all. We aren't being asked if we'd prefer a city with less cars so that life would be more tolerable on or off arterial. We aren't being asked if cities should even have things called arterial. And we most certainly did not get asked if we wanted to carve an exemption for empty Shaughnessy and West Point Gray Mansions out of the policy. Instead, our choice is between the status quo, a slow mass eviction of everyone without land or landed parents, or this tiny, tiny policy tweak, allowing a few lucky souls to stay so long as they are content with these or particular wafting in when they sit down for dinner with their family. We should reflect on why we believe this is the best we can do. We should reflect on the forces that don't allow us to consider other options. I've heard that politics is the art of the possible. Perhaps that is what this is, a beautiful piece of political artwork representing what is possible today and not one square foot more, which is strange. When it comes to space to drive and space to park, there's no debate about what's required and there is no limit on how much we'll do. It's just more, 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 more private parking, more public parking. There's never enough. We now have a planning department specifying the maximum amount of parking. It's always, it's always more. So it's strange that we always know how to solve parking affordability. But when it comes to housing, we have these tortured long calls where we all debate about what the best strategy is and then we all shrug and go away because none of us really care, I don't think. Most of the people who have housing, I guess, don't care. Anyways, there was one conversation about alternatives I heard tonight. It was Patrick Condon about the need for nonprofit housing, and that's great. But I worry that Patrick Condon is missing something very important. In the nonprofit world, the flip side of the price or the rent is the waitlist. So to talk about insisting on affordability without insisting on a zero-month waitlist is just trading on affordable housing for unavailable housing. We need housing that is available and affordable. I don't much know we do it. It can be public housing. It can be social housing. But I know for damn sure it won't be single-family housing. This report talks of areas that are most suitable for rental buildings, AKA most suitable for tenants. Let's be clear. All of the city and all of the region, every lot, every street, every neighbourhood, every city are suitable for people, period. Whether they rent, whether they live in non-market housing, whether they live in an apartment, whether they live in a house, whether they have no housing at all, all the land in the region is suitable for housing that they need. This policy won't solve our regional housing shortage, nor will any other single policy, but it will let a few hundred people a year live closer to where they'd like to live and need a few hundred fewer tenants for existing landlords like mine. Apartment tenants deserve the right to live in every part of the city and this policy will give them a few more options. So it's worthy of support, even if it could be much, much better. I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thanks for your time this evening. I don't see any questions for you, but want to thank you so much for calling in and your participation. Councillor, that Stuart Smith was Speaker number thirty-two, so as promised, we're going to take a break.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I don't want to ask you to rule on this, but I'm disturbed by the challenge that we did get as a councillor by the Speaker number thirty-one. I'm wondering if while we're on a break, you could ask for our legal staff to provide us with advice on the challenge that was made to us that based on that memo by the then-city manager Sadhu Johnston, December eleventh, twenty eighteen, on the common law duties in following the procedures of notification on an item referred to, referral to public hearing. If you could ask a legal to give us their opinion on whether the speaker was correct in that interpretation, in which case I gather then this public hearing item could be called out of order or if it is in order, but if they could give us an explanation for why they determine that.
Thanks for the question, Councillor Carr. In order to have a point of order considered, you have to name the section of the procedural bylaw or that you would like me to rule on.
Section eighty-seven.
A, to quote it, "is not compatible with the purposes and objects of the Vancouver Charter, including the good rule and government of the city."
Okay, we have had already legal briefings on this question, but I will look into this and provide a ruling when I get back. Thank you. So we'll take a break, Councillor, and I will talk to the court about this. Yep. Thanks so much, Counsel. I see Counselor Carr is, is present. So, so I have had a discussion with the city manager and the legal team here at the city. They've, I have recirculated this, this issue did come up prior to the public hearing. Legal did present a memo to us. I have recirculated that memo for you to, uh, to, to look at. But in this case, I've been advised that the council is legally allowed to proceed, has followed all the proper procedures. So I find the, find the hearing in order and we can continue. Um, clerks, next up is speaker number thirty-three, Rand in Fox.
Hello?
Hello. Thanks for calling in tonight. You have up to five minutes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this proposal. I'm a resident and a homeowner in the Hastings Sunrise neighborhood in Vancouver, one block off a street that could be affected by the streamlining rentals proposal. Although I don't believe that this proposal goes nearly far enough, it is certainly a step in the right direction on several fronts. It helps to address the severe housing crisis plaguing Vancouver. It helps to fight climate change and habitat destruction. And it will make our city and our neighborhoods more vibrant, welcoming, and equitable. I want the labor shoe of the housing crisis, as that has been fairly well covered by other speakers. Suffice it to say, streamlining construction of rentals means more homes for more people. It's true that we need more below market housing, which twenty percent of the units in the six-story buildings will be, but we actually need more market housing too. Lots of people who could afford market rates still can't find places to live in the city because there simply isn't enough housing. Second, streamlining rentals is an environmental win because it increases housing density. We've shown that doubling urban density can reduce carbon pollution from household travel by nearly half and residential energy use by more than a third. Currently, many people who might prefer to live in the city and rely more heavily on public transit or active transportation have no real choice but to live in the suburbs, which often requires a long commute by personal vehicle. People living in apartments are less likely to own vehicles and more likely to use transit and active transportation. So particularly if the city eliminates parking minimums, this may well result in decreased vehicle use. Additionally, increased density in the city will cut down on the habitat destruction caused by the ever-increasing suburban sprawl that we're currently seeing as people are forced out of the urban core. I've heard some concern that increased, increased density will lead to loss of green space and tree canopies. But the theoretical future residents of these potential rental buildings, buildings already exist. By not providing them housing in the city where it would be more space efficient, we're just outsourcing those impacts elsewhere. That said, I do certainly hope that tree canopy and green space will be preserved. Third, this proposal will make our city more vibrant and more equitable. As young people increasingly can't afford homes in the city, they tend to move out, leaving neighborhoods with few families, few children, and little public life. By streamlining rentals throughout the city, we'll be inviting life back into these neighborhoods. Also, by allowing some rentals, although not nearly enough, to be built off of arterials, we're taking steps to provide renters with healthier living situations. In two thousand and five, City P recommended that new apartments be located on arterials to, quote, "shield to some extent adjacent single-family homes from the noise of arterial traffic acting as a buffer." Nobody's home should be a buffer for single-family homeowners who already tend to experience a much higher level of privilege. Research shows that living on high, high-traffic streets has negative health outcomes, including shortened life expectancy, increased rates of childhood asthma, and increased rates of dementia. This proposal takes a preliminary step toward writing this on wrong by allowing at least some apartment buildings where renters can enjoy some of the improved health outcomes of living farther away from traffic noise and pollution. I hope that if this proposal passes, the city will move quickly to take this even further, allowing rental apartments to be built adjacent to parks and on schools and on quiet neighborhood streets and making Vancouver a more equitable place for all. Finally, I want to recognize my extreme privilege to be a homeowner in Vancouver. Because of the affordability crisis, my family only managed this because we were forced to have financial help from family and were able to work out a co-housing situation with a friend. I'm disheartened to see the lack of empathy on display by other homeowners who were similarly privileged or who were perhaps fortunate to buy when the market was more affordable and who now seek to limit others' ability to move into their neighborhoods. It is disappointing to see people place a higher priority on views, street parking, and nebulous aesthetic values than they do on providing homes for fellow human beings. We've heard homeowners complain that they might be forced to move if this proposal passed, which of course they wouldn't actually be if an apartment complex was built next door. Ignoring the fact that literally being forced to move is something that happens to renters in Vancouver every single day. Basement apartments may occasionally be more affordable than other options, but they're extremely insecure housing situations. We've heard complaints that current residents don't feel there was enough neighborhood consultation on the proposal, despite the fact that there have been multiple rounds of consultation and that single-family homeowners continue to have much more of a say in City's speed than almost anyone else. As a homeowner myself, I don't believe that buying a home means buying a neighborhood and dictating who is allowed to live there. We are fortunate to live in one of the most beautiful cities in the world. Let's welcome more people in instead of shutting them out. Thank you.
Thanks so much for phoning in tonight. I don't see any questions for you, but want to thank you for your participation in this debate. Thanks. I'm going to move on to speaker thirty-four, who is Nazim Zub, sorry, I don't, my glasses on, Zuberry.
Zubry. Can you hear me all right?
I can't. Thanks. I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your last name.
Uh, no worries. Hi, my name is Naseem. I'm a resident of Vancouver and I'm speaking to voice my overwhelming support for this proposal. We've heard a lot of concerns about neighborhood character thus far, and as a renter, I wanted to provide another perspective on specific issues. My wife and I rent an apartment in downtown West End. We can see West Georgia Street from our window, which is a whopping seven-lane wide. And on the other side of the block, we're flanked by two more arterials. In the summer, West End gets a massive influx of tourists renting bicycles to visit Stanley Park. During this time, I see pedestrians squeezed onto narrow sidewalks and overflowing into alleys. They walk their bikes to the park since there's nowhere to cycle, cycle safely. Instead of bike lanes, efficient pedestrian space, we have wide roads and free parking for jumbo-sized vehicles, making for an environment unsafe for children. Nobody is going to wait around to chat with their neighbors standing at the corner of Denman and West Georgia. We've heard a lot about the importance of preserving neighborhood character in single-family home neighborhoods. But what about our neighborhood character? If you were to take either of the two arterials facing our building and compare them to a similarly sized street in a city like Amsterdam, you would find bike lanes on each side, plants and greenery, peaceful outdoor seating, wide sidewalks, pedestrian priority for street crossings, and only one or two lanes with thirty kilometer an hour traffic with limited car parking, or better yet, space for buses or trams. That street would be far more financially productive. It would be a far more enjoyable place to be and transport far more people. The world is changing and most people have no choice but to come to cities to access economic opportunities. When we deny density, people live further and further places than need to be, forcing them to drive and to take more trips. Low-density, single-family home neighborhoods are designed around the premise of limiting the negative effects of car traffic in their own neighborhoods while maximizing it in ours. Which is why I find it a bit ironic there's so much pushback for us to access their neighborhoods in the form of houses. We cannot talk about the consequences of density on single-family home neighborhood character without also mentioning the consequences of a lack of density on ours. We need to create dense neighborhoods so people can access their essentials within a reasonable distance by walking or cycling, drastically reducing the number of car trips and make it financially viable to build public transit connections to those areas. It's not fair to say this proposal is an attack on single-familyhood, single-family home neighborhood character. Rather, it's about whose neighborhood character we choose to prioritize, that of the few or that of the many, and whether we choose to incentivize sustainable and environmentally friendly forms of land use and transportation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks for your time tonight. I'm just checking here. I don't see any questions for you. And I'm going to move to speaker number five, who is just Marlene, no last name. So, Marlene, if you're there, could you let us know your last name? And you have up to five minutes.
Uh, Marlene Wickman, I'm from Vancouver. Do I have slides?
I don't know. Have you sent them in prior to the meeting?
Oh, I sent them several days ago, probably on Sunday.
Okay, I'll just check with the clerks and stop your timer.
Uh, we do have slides and they're being loaded.
Perfect. Thank you, clerks.
All right.
I will just wait one second. Just going to make sure that they're up so the public can see them and I'll just let you know when it's ready to go. Great, they're up now, so please go ahead up to.
Okay, all right. First, first off, thank you, Mayor and counselors, for this privilege to speak to you tonight. I am opposing streamlining rental around local shopping areas.
Councillor Carr is present, so I have had a discussion with the city manager and the legal team here at the city. They've, I have recirculated this, this issue did come up prior to the public hearing. Legal did present a memo to us. I have recirculated that memo for you to, to look at. But in this case, I've been advised that the council's legally allowed to proceed, has followed all the proper procedures. So I find the, find the hearing in order and we can continue. Clerks, next up is Speaker number thirty-three, Ryan in Fox.
Hello?
Hello. Thanks for calling in tonight. You have up to five minutes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this proposal. I'm a resident and a homeowner in the Hastings Sunrise neighborhood in Vancouver, one block off a street that could be affected by the streamlining rentals proposal. Although I don't believe that this proposal goes nearly far enough, it is certainly a step in the right direction on several fronts. It helps to address the severe housing crisis plaguing Vancouver. It helps to fight climate change and habitat destruction, and it will make our city and our neighborhoods more vibrant, welcoming, and equitable. I want the labor shoe of the housing crisis, as that has been fairly well-covered by other speakers. Suffice it to say, streamlining construction of rentals means more homes for more people. It's true that we need more below-market housing, which twenty percent of the units in the six-story buildings will be, but we actually need more market housing, too. Lots of people who could afford market rates still can't find places to live in the city because there simply isn't enough housing. Second, streamlining rentals is an environmental win because it increases housing density. We've shown that doubling urban density can reduce carbon pollution from household travel by nearly half and residential energy use by more than a third. Currently, many people who might prefer to live in the city and rely more heavily on public transit or active transportation have no real choice but to live in the suburbs, which often requires a long commute by personal vehicle. People living in apartments are less likely to own vehicles and more likely to use transit and active transportation. So particularly if the city eliminates parking minimums, this may well result in decreased vehicle use. Additionally, increased density in the city will cut down on the habitat destruction caused by the ever-increasing suburban sprawl that we're currently seeing as people are forced out of the urban core. I've heard some concern that increased, increased density will lead to loss of green space and tree canopies, but the theoretical future residents of these potential rental buildings already exist. By not providing them housing in the city where it would be more space-efficient, we're just outsourcing those impacts to elsewhere. That said, I do certainly hope that tree canopy and green space will be preserved. Third, this proposal will make our city more vibrant and more equitable. As young people increasingly can't afford homes in the city, they tend to move out, leaving neighborhoods with few families, few children, and little public life. By streamlining rentals throughout the city, we'll be inviting life back into these neighborhoods. Also, by allowing some rentals, although not nearly enough, to be built off of arterials, we're taking steps to provide renters with healthier living situations. In two thousand and five, City P recommended that new apartments be located on arterials to, quote, "shield to some extent adjacent single-family homes from the noise of arterial traffic acting as a buffer." Nobody's home should be a buffer for single-family homeowners who already tend to experience a much higher level of privilege. Research shows that living on high-traffic streets has negative health outcomes, including shortened life expectancy, increased rates of childhood asthma, and increased rates of dementia. This proposal takes a preliminary step toward writing this unwrong by allowing at least some apartment buildings where renters can enjoy some of the improved health outcomes of living farther away from traffic noise and pollution. I hope that if this proposal passes, the city will move quickly to take this even further, allowing rental apartments to be built adjacent to parks and on schools and on quiet neighborhood streets, and making Vancouver a more equitable place for all. Finally, I want to recognize my extreme privilege to be a homeowner in Vancouver. Because of the affordability crisis, my family only managed this because we were forced to have financial help from family and were able to work out a co-housing situation with a friend. I'm disheartened to see the lack of empathy on display by other homeowners who were similarly privileged or who were perhaps fortunate to buy when the market was more affordable and who now seek to limit others' ability to move into their neighborhoods. It is disappointing to see people place a higher priority on views, street parking, and nebulous aesthetic values than they do on providing homes for fellow human beings. We've heard homeowners complain that they might be forced to move if this proposal passed, which of course they wouldn't actually be if an apartment complex was built next door. Ignoring the fact that literally being forced to move is something that happens to renters in Vancouver every single day. Basement apartments may occasionally be more affordable than other options, but they're extremely insecure housing situations. We've heard complaints that current residents don't feel there was enough neighborhood consultation on the proposal, despite the fact that there have been multiple rounds of consultation, and that single-family homeowners continue to have much more of a say in City's speed than almost anyone else. As a homeowner myself, I don't believe that buying a home means buying a neighborhood and dictating who is allowed to live there. We are fortunate to live in one of the most beautiful cities in the world. Let's welcome more people in instead of shutting them out. Thank you.
Thanks so much for phoning in tonight. I don't see any questions for you, but want to thank you for your participation in this debate. Thanks. I'm going to move on to Speaker thirty-four, who is Nazim Zub, sorry, I don't have my glasses on, Zubari.
Can you hear me all right?
I can. Thanks. I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your last name.
Uh, no worries. Hi, my name is Naseem. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm speaking to voice my overwhelming support for this proposal. We've heard a lot of concerns about neighborhood character thus far, and as a renter, I wanted to provide another perspective on a specific issue. My wife and I rent an apartment in downtown West End. We can see West Georgia Street from our window, which is a whopping seven-lane wide. And on the other side of the block, we're flanked by two more arterials. In the summer, West End gets a massive influx of tourists renting bicycles to visit Stanley Park. During this time, I see pedestrians squeezed onto narrow sidewalks and overflowing into alleys. They walk their bikes to the park since there's nowhere to cycle safely. Instead of bike lanes, efficient pedestrian space, we have wide roads and free parking for jumbo-sized vehicles, making for an environment unsafe for children. Nobody is going to wait around to chat with their neighbors standing at the corner of Denman in West Georgia. We've heard a lot about the importance of preserving neighborhood character in single-family home neighborhoods, but what about our neighborhood character? If you were to take either of the two arterials facing our building and compare them to a similarly sized street in a city like Amsterdam, you would find bike lanes on each side, plants and greenery, peaceful outdoor seating, wide sidewalks, pedestrian priority for street crossings, and only one or two lanes at thirty kilometer-an-hour traffic with limited car parking, or better yet, space for buses or trams. That street would be far more financially productive. It would be a far more enjoyable place to be and transport far more people. The world is changing, and most people have no choice but to come to cities to access economic opportunities. When we deny density, people live further and further places than need to be, forcing them to drive and to take more trips. Low-density, single-family home neighborhoods are designed around the premise of limiting the negative effects of car traffic in their own neighborhoods while maximizing it in hours, which is why I find it a bit ironic there's so much pushback for us to access their neighborhoods in the form of houses. We cannot talk about the consequences of density on single-family home neighborhood character without also mentioning the consequences of a lack of density on ours. We need to create dense neighborhoods so people can access their essentials within a reasonable distance by walking or cycling, drastically reducing the number of car trips, and make it financially viable to build public transit connections to those areas. Not fair to say this proposal is an attack on single-familyhood, single-family home neighborhood character. Rather, it's about whose neighborhood character we choose to prioritize, that of the few or that of the many, and whether we choose to incentivize sustainable and environmentally friendly forms of land use and transportation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks for your time tonight. I'm just checking here. I don't see any questions for you, and I'm going to move to Speaker number five, who is just Marlene, no last name. So, Marlene, if you're there, could you let us know your last name, and you have up to five minutes?
I'm Marlene Wickman, I'm from Vancouver. Do I have slides?
I don't know. Have you sent them in prior to the meeting?
Oh, I sent them several days ago, probably on Sunday.
Okay, I'll just check with the clerks and stop your timer.
We do have slides, and they're being loaded.
Perfect. Thank you, clerks.
All right.
I will just wait one second. Just going to make sure that they're up so the public can see them, and I'll just let you know when it's ready to go. Great, they're up now, so please go ahead up to...
Okay, all right. First, first off, thank you, Mayor and councillors, for this privilege to speak to you tonight. I am opposing streamlining rental around local shopping areas. Originally, I was going to talk about aesthetics and proportions, but after Tuesday night, I changed my talk altogether. So I'm just going to go quickly through the slides. The first one was disproportional representation of houses versus the buildings. The buildings have eleven-foot-high floors. Second slide was about a cold kind of aesthetic, and the third slide?
I'll just move the slide for you, so clerks, if you can move to the next slide.
So going from a kind of a cold look, which I don't want more cold-looking buildings in Vancouver, to three, I had my in-house designer create a nice, warm, and inviting makeover of the building with, you know, trees and food security and socialization, a much happier idea of Vancouver. Now, my new talk. Single-family homes did not cut on affordability. Poor and ever-changing government policies create crises in unaffordability. I don't want to hear more propaganda from self-declared urban planners, urbanist sociology students, what have you. From watching and participating in these city public hearings, I've been struck by recurring themes: democracy and having the right to be an active and vocal participant, having properly supported and well-defined social housing, having security and safety in one's own home. I was moved by the raw and emotional speakers that have been in front of council recently. First, the Falls Creek co-op owner, whose sleepless life was racked with anxiety about her personal future and that of her home, and the second, Timon Stewart, who came here Tuesday night begging for the constitutional right to keep his home that he had sunk all of his soul and money into, is, quote, "You're driving thousands of people, and where are they going to? Rentals? Two hard-working people terrified of having the land ripped out from under their..." Also from Tuesday, I noticed nonprofits asking for government money to get their projects underway. Most compelling was Mr. Mortensen, who actually does not live in Vancouver, a developer of micro-sweats, a self-designated expert, stating that townhouses are not profitable, that developers need density, and the government has a lot of money to make this happen. He wants to use the full power of government to make land assemblies. He was so self-assured that this would happen. I had a déjà vu. In April there, there was a public hearing for no consultation on rezoning for six-story social housing, which passed. Then someone thumped his chest and said, "We need twelve-story social housing." Then in May, there was a public hearing for no consultation for twelve-story social housing, which had one hundred and ten speakers, and council rejected it. Then it all became clear to me, and I saw the Vancouver plan. It's not about disproportional four-to-six-story apartment buildings. It's about rezoning major arterials in Austrie areas for twelve or more-story housing by government and large entities. Land lift is not an issue for them, effectively ripping the land out from under many thousands of single-family homeowners. Coriolis Consulting Corporation on page two forty of the three forty-eight-page document stated that ninety-three percent of potential lots under this rezoning policy are unlikely to provide greater affordability and still be financially viable for redevelopment. Social housing projects would require significant government subsidy. So, single-family homeland goes to the government. Single-family homeowner pays for the privilege to become a renter with their tax dollars. This doesn't sound like equity, shared prosperity, or climate protection. It sounds like collective visation. I found a wonderful city document called "Secured Rental Policy: Engagement for Low Density Transition Area", March to October twenty twenty. It had eight hundred participants, mainly in Kitzellano. They stated that they did not want to live in rental units on busy arterials. They wanted ground living accommodation, preservation of neighborhood character, green space, adequate infrastructure, and affordability. Then on page eighteen, from the Urban Development Institute Rental Housing Subcommittee, developers assert the need for bolder building heights in the proposed rezoning schedules. Concern regarding the need to submit a pro forma to real estate services in the rezoning process, this requirement increases development timelines for developers. In closing, this says it all. This policy is a Trojan horse to give developers and governments free rein all over Vancouver. It's not really about what Vancouver citizens want. Don't pull the land out from under our feet. Still let people keep their homes and not be forced into land assemblies. If you don't have this protection about people's right to own land, I would say, do not resuscitate, don't resuscitate this policy. You need to come up with something else. Oh, I haven't got a note. Is my slide three showing?
Well, actually, your time is up, but you do have questions from Councillor Domino.
Wonderful.
Go ahead, Councillor Domino.
Yes, thanks for calling in, Marlene. Appreciate your comments. I just want to clarify a question with you, and it's around one, there's several proposals in this report, but one is around specifically the C2 commercial areas and on arterials of just streamline the rezoning process for rentals on those blocks. And, and right now, with the existing zoning, it would be four-story strata, but otherwise, if you want to have rental, you have to go through a rezoning process, and it takes a lot more time. Do you have concerns with that piece in terms of the just the streamlining part of that?
Okay, well, first off, okay, that, that, that attitude of that particular developer, it seemed like, oh, I've got some secret knowledge, and I'm, you know, rubbing my hands. I'm so excited to get ahold of some funding. That was like, whoa, you know, there's stuff here I don't understand, and maybe I should be concerned. The other thing about rentals, I have no problems with rentals. I have one issue about that there's not kind of an overview look of how Vancouver's supposed to look like. You, I think city planners are supposed to be using like PDFs. I read a CityWatch article about that. Why isn't the city virtualized so everybody can see things in three D, the right proportions, you can see what's missing? Okay, you have a nice kind of consistent look. I see that is sort of missing altogether, is figuring out a Vancouver look, making it look nice, making it look good for business, even if you had film industry, that they know where you have, you know, to advertise for where to film things. You could even make like a Vancouver, I don't know, video game, whatever. Okay, your technology of actually assessing the city and where developments should be and how it should look, it's kind of missing. Okay, now, in terms of rental, I wouldn't just broadly, like, change the zoning like this, because you're going to create like land assembly fighting amongst people. You look at, okay, this is sort of an area that's got kind of like BK, and could be like unnatural for more organic development. Okay, because this is what things, things happen. You know, something interesting happens in the area. There's new jobs, you know, development is attracted there. So you figure out organic development there. There's going to be certain areas, which obviously will be like a highlight area, and you don't need to have like a four-to-six-story rental. You could have a much taller rental, but you have to figure out your proportions around it so that it's a good look and it's usable. So...
Can I just stop, stop you there for one second? Because I just really want to clarify the question I'm asking. This is in our commercial areas on these major arterials, so I'll take Hastings as an example, because it's near me, where you, with the existing zoning, you could do strata, and there are some strata builds, but if you wanted to, you'd have to go through a rezoning process, and it takes a lot of time. And, and there have been some, and they're six stories, and they include retail at the bottom to help add vitality to the street. Do you have objections to that component of this report?
Okay, uh, okay, now, if, okay, I think you still need to have some community kind of like input, but there should be kind of like a plan so people kind of know what's kind of happening as opposed to randomly kind of in a block, you know, to build something that doesn't really, you know, fit, or it's not the best way to do it. Okay, because like, you know, this, you could have all kinds of random, like, appearing buildings, and it's not a very pleasant thing to look at. Okay, you know, you just with the, like, I had the slide one about this mega-sized house that's almost the size of a four-story building, you know, that's not, not, not correct. You still have to have kind of a visually pleasing look, all right? You know, things have to kind of like, look like they're placed properly, and not just like, like stuck in the middle with, like, support around it. You understand? You don't, you're having a shopping district. There has to be some type of planning that it's a proper shopping district. It can't look random.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and thanks for clarifying that. I think I'm probably over my time. Thank you.
Councillor Hardwick, you're up next.
All right, just looking for that mute button. I really just wanted to clarify, did you make those slides available to council, and was there a written accompaniment to it?
Oh, no, no, I didn't have a, you know, a write-up for, I didn't submit a write-up for that. I did have more about, originally was about, you know, aesthetics and like proportions, but you know, from after, you know, the, you know, the two, you know, listening to what was kind of going on, I thought, oh, you know, probably there's going to be a lot of people talking about aesthetics, all right? And, you know, this, you know, that, just that thing kind of came out. It is an oddity, and probably if I don't say it, no one else is going to bring it up. But, you know, it does, you know, stay in that three forty-eight-page document that probably, you know, this is not going to be, you know, that good of a deal for most developers. And even I remember, like, on the tonight, even one of the city staff was saying that, oh, probably more like a mom-and-pop organization would go for this, this policy. But then all these other people started saying, well, we have nonprofits, and we want to get government money, and I develop for nonprofits, and I would like government money, and think, okay, okay, that's a different perspective than the city staff saying, well, probably mom-and-pop shops would like to develop whatever, two or three houses together, you know, create a business or an apartment complex. I know that probably deviated from your question.
Yeah, I just...
Yes, but I wanted a slide three because my daughters do that. I even have something for Councillor Pete Frye with a vegan food lab, so I still wanted to have that slide up there.
Just out of interest, what neighborhood do you live in?
Oh, oh, goodness. All right, I have to out myself. I live in, live in, like, Kensington Cedar Cottage area, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
That's not really outing yourself, but appreciate it, and I saw a smile from Councillor Frye. I think he appreciated the slide.
Oh, yes, I'm all for it.
So, thank you very much for calling in.
Thank you. Okay, all right, take care.
Moving on to Speaker number thirty, John Stavel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I'm John Stavel. I'm here in two roles. I'm the Chair of UDI, Urban Development Institute. I'm also President of Reliance Properties, and we're a rental developer, condominium man, rental developer in Vancouver, manage hundreds of rental units, and have built hundreds of rental units in the city. Very supportive of this policy. I think it's the least we can do. I think it's the, it's one of many, to come, much larger steps are going to need to be made by this in future councils to adjust housing supply and affordability. So strongly in support, even though ourselves at Reliance do not have any C2 projects that would be moving forward under this policy. We do have hundreds of other rental units that are held up by the Broadway Corridor Plan, but that's conversation for another day. So I really think that, you know, again, this is the least we can do. This policy's been around since twenty nineteen. It was initiated by council over, you know, overarching ten-year housing plan. It's been well-supported by staff. I've seen it come to council before and be strongly supported, and then unfortunately, it got kind of kicked down the road, and, you know, here, two years later, almost, we're still dealing with it. It's unfortunate, but the best we can do to improve the lot for renters is arterial development, but it is, it is a good beginning, and I hope it's the beginning of a much more significant and equitable land use across the city for renters. It's odd to me that we choose where people can live by the tenure or the type of housing they have. It's just something that's wrong. It's going to have to change over time. So, very much in support. And a couple of things I also want to say is that rental is on a knife-edge. We've had a good run with rental, with Rent One Hundred, and MRF, and Secured Market Rental Housing, and West End Inclusionary Zoning, and, but now the headwinds on rent strong. Wood frame construction costs have risen dramatically. Developers are quite steadily now switching projects back from rental to condominium. Now, I'm looking at a condominium development on Broadway that is four-story, that could have been rental, if the Broadway Corridor Plan had been moved ahead, but, you know, faster, but now we're going to build four-story condominium, and the price is frankly is unachievable for many, many people. Maybe could have built rental there. So, you know, it's, it's, an addition that hasn't been talked about is that rental requires about forty-five percent of the cost be funded directly by the developer versus the financing, whereas condominium is about fifteen percent. So, you know, a developer can build three condominium projects for the same amount of equity that they can build one rental project, so it's certainly not for everybody. We need to do everything and anything we can do to encourage developers to choose rental over condominium where they can. And so, again, very strongly in support. Thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in this evening. I don't see questions for you, so we'll move on to Speaker number thirty-seven, Luke Anton-Sulvang.
Not on the line, Mayor Stewart, and not in person tonight.
Okay, thank you. Speaker number thirty-eight, Stephen Boas, who is listed as being in person. Clerks, so do we have Stephen Boas there?
Yes, we do. He's just setting up, and we'll be ready momentarily.
Great, thanks so much. If you can start with slide number five, and then it's just set up JPEGs.
Hey, clerks, I'm...
We got the right slide?
Okay, that's fine. One of them, six or seven. Okay, hello, my name's Stephen Boas, and I live in Grandview Woodlands. I'm a renter. I work in Fairview. And while this proposal before you is called "Streamlining Rental Around Local Shopping Areas," it actually affects C2 zones in Grandview Woodlands, in Fairview, in Mount Pleasant, areas that are supposed to be exempt, or they're not supposed to be exempt, but there is a subarea A, and I'll talk about the impacts there. We can go to slide number one. Okay, this applies to the other zones above sixty, but in section four point three-two, there is a wording there to allow for fifteen-point-three-meter heights to increase the height of C2 for all zones across the city in C2, from the thirty-eight point, or thirteen-point-eight meters by over five feet. Next slide. And the issue that I have, as someone who enjoys the small shops, is the scale. When you, the slide, which is from East Hastings and Vancouver Heights, you can see the huge floor height of the first floor, and you look at the building beside it, you have an intimate floor height. You've got a small shop there, and there's a different scale of the streetscape and so on. So, a lot of the new buildings that are being approved, whether it's at six stories, they've got these enormous floor heights, and they have large shops usually. And if you go to the next slide, please, that's also on East Hastings and Hastings Sunrise, and you can see the chain stores of it. You have large floor heights, large floor plates, high rents, and often only the chains can rent here. So you're essentially creating a chain store zoning by increasing the height by that five feet. Next slide. And what you have in Grandview Woodland and in other rich communities like this is you've got this like intimate scale. You've got small frontages. We had twenty-five-foot sizes of store frontage, and this is actually a relatively new store at Venable's and Commercial Drive, and it's also fitting into the grand streetscape scale. Next slide. The experience of walking along Commercial Drive is a very, very rich and varied experience because of the small store frontages. You always see something new, and there are a lot of mom-ups. Next slide. There's a lot of street activity, and this is essentially activated by the small stores and the frontages and the rich frontages. And what happens if you add a very, very large store with a high frontage or a high ceiling, and you have a bit of the streetscape that's committed to one store? So this can make for some very, very bland and boring streetscapes, impersonal, and also with a new development being out of scale of the current scale of Little Italy and Commercial Drive, and even Main and Fourteenth, and other parts of the city that are very similar in scale. And next slide, if we look at, you know, there's a lot of local shopping. I shop here. I walk here. I bike here on Commercial Drive, and raising the heights of the ceilings and having those enormous floor heights actually is going counter to the climate emergency goals of council, because you essentially have to heat another five feet of volume of air that you have to heat. You have to construct that extra five feet of concrete or wood or whatever, and that all adds up over the life of the buildings here, going counter to the... Uh, and that all adds up over the life of the buildings here, going co- counter to the climate emergency goals by just, uh, raising the floor heights in C two. It's not just a streetscape that's affected. Next slide. And, uh, saying there's, there's so much there that's going on. So I'm going to ask that council, if you could please consider not changing the C two zoning. Uh, so, uh, to keep the forty five foot maximum height, not, not to allow the fifty feet and strike section four point three two as well as the, uh, figure three, which is a new, uh, zoning envelope, new setbacks that are proposed because I think these are incompatible with the, the Little Lee. And, and they, they would change the nature of the drive in terms of driving out mom and pops from youth development and, and just bringing in the chain stores. And I haven't heard anyone say that they really want more chain stores on Commercial Drive. So, uh, thank you, uh, for, uh, listening. And if you can advance a few more slides, just go through them very quickly. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. You're, you're at five minutes. Thank you so much for calling in tonight. And there, uh, oh, councillor Frye has a question for you. Councillor Frye?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Steve. I just, so just to clarify, that Commercial Drive isn't being contemplated in this policy. It's actually excluded.
Uh, yeah, it, it's, it's, uh, covered by the, the sub area A and the, the changes in, um, height from forty five to fifty feet. By allowing.
I believe the drive is excluded, but I, but I do take your point about the, 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 uh, narrower storefrontages and stuff. So, um, is, is your issue really just, uh, like the storefrontage or is it also the height?
Well, they're kind of combined. They're kind of combined because you see, if you give the extra height, then you can actually, uh, like you've got a narrow, uh, you've got a slight slope on the drive normally going up or down. And if you have a small storefrontages, you can start a little bit lower on one end and go tiny bit higher on the other end and then split it up where you're, you're entering the, the shops. And when you do one large floor, uh, or one large frontage, you have one entry point and that's kind of has to be at grade. So that kind of necessitates the higher ceiling. So, so they, they go together in terms of urban design, but I think that the smaller storefrontages help, um, prevent the, the high ceilings. And, and also the scale of a store, you know, if you've got twenty five feet, uh, in width, you've got a high ceiling, it doesn't really feel like it.
I suppose I'm prejudiced by my own environment where we have twenty five foot lots here in Chinatown on the downtown east side. They go pie higher than three and a half, but I, I do appreciate the, the context around the store width frontages. So.
Yeah. And councillor Frye, I think the context in Little Italy and Commercial Drive might be a little bit different in terms of what's there existing. And if you, you know, redevelop some of the lots under C two, if you change the C two, then any, anything new would fit differently in the, the current context if you raise the heights. Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for questions. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Uh, council, we're moving on to speaker thirty nine of eighty, thirty nine of eighty nine. And that speaker is, uh, Ben Han.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, um, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Ben and I am speaking in full support of the streamlining rental proposal. I am a renter and I live in a purpose built rental building in Fairview. I am privileged to call this neighborhood of mixed apartments my home, where the streets are quiet, dense, green, walkable and livable. Many of my peers do not have the same privilege and are forced to choose basement suites, laneway houses and a few limited options on arterial streets. My neighborhood of two, three, four and twelve story apartments is home to both renters and owners, home to an abundance of trees and greenery and a place where residents gather for community events over the summer, such as ice cream social gatherings. My neighborhood is owned quite quickly in the nineteen fifties for density. And today it is home to a beloved mix of small apartments, heritage homes, townhouses, medium sized apartments, twelve story apartments that residents share and call home. I bring up my neighborhood because density and livability are not contradictory. Density and greenery are not contradictory either. Some people may have the impression that rental apartments will take away from the quiet peace and greenery of single family neighborhoods. However, walk down Fairview at night and you will notice that these rental apartment streets, when placed one block away from arterial streets, are just as quiet and peaceful as current single family neighborhoods. As I am speaking, I am able to look out to the tall yellowwood ash fir and maple trees planted by the people who built these original apartments. I spoke to a resident over the summer who moved into an apartment across my street fifteen years ago. He told me that the maple trees were only small saplings when he first moved to the apartment and now they are tall canopy. Our cities grow and change and if dense, mixed neighborhoods are allowed to grow as well, they can become just as livable, green and full of character as current single family neighborhoods. Finally, I no longer want to see my fellow community members confined to basement units, laneway suites or fee rental options on arterial roads. And that is why I urge council to adopt the plan and take it further. Allow rental buildings on both arterial roads and also on tides. As mentioned by previous speakers, this policy is the bare minimum we can do to bring us closer to an equitable future where residents have affordable rental options to choose from. We have so much more work to do and opposing this bare minimum policy will only delay the important work that needs to come. Our city will continue to change and grow and I urge council to nurture this growth, adopt this policy and begin focusing on the next steps to building an equitable and resilient city. Thank you.
Thanks for your, uh, coming in this evening. There are no questions for you. I appreciate your participation. Thanks again. Uh, council on to speaker number forty, William Cleveland.
Speaker number forty is not on the line.
Thanks clerks. Uh, we have speaker number forty one, Tim Grant.
Good, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Tim Grant. Um, Vancouver resident and representing PCI Developments this evening. Uh, I'm speaking in support of the recommendations as presented and, uh, understanding how many speakers are on, on the docket tonight. I'll just go really quickly through, through what I believe are four key points. Um, the six story form has been generally accepted and proven successful throughout the city. And removing the, the requirement for rezoning for rental, uh, would reduce the rezoning burden on staff that, that, uh, obviously is a big issue with the workers that they're currently facing. Uh, secondly, uh, removing the requirement for rezoning per story rental would save eighteen or more months from a potential development schedule, which will reduce the development cost and, and help support the decision of rental, uh, versus condo on the key arterial. Thirdly, um, the additional height offered in the retail would be very significant in terms of improved retail spaces and improved street fronts. And it's, it's frankly been a, a long challenge for developers as they've been approaching the C two zoning in the past. And finally, I, I think it's really important, this recommendation in light of the climate, climate emergency that the city is facing, particularly off arterials as proposed, more supply, rental supply will help get more people living closer to shops, transit and schools, which would be a big move to support climate emergency goals and make for better neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, questions from councillor De Genova?
Thanks so much. I'm just wondering if you think that this possibly leaves still some city or opportunities on the table above and beyond six stories, uh, when we're thinking about, um, not just rental, but some of the other types of affordable housing that could be co-located, such as looking at affordable homeownership and other programs that CMHC and BC Housing are currently funding? Just wondering if, if you feel that maybe there's, there's still possibilities for more density to deepen affordability in this policy.
Um, I, 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 I think this policy is a, a really important step. Uh, and, and I'm not suggesting that it would, would solve all the issues and certainly there's other opportunities that, that I'd suggest could be reviewed. But I think this is a really important step and, and makes a really, um, important statement to, to, to the community at large in terms of the importance of rental housing and, and what we expect from all of our communities across the city.
Okay, um, just a follow question to that. Um, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I suppose that if we're only looking at this in the context of streamlining rental housing and, and specific, um, types of built form, um, it's, it's, it goes beyond the land economics. It's looking at what programs federally and provincially are currently on the table. And some of those include affordable homeownership. So whereas, you know, an applicant, a nonprofit or, you know, a private, you know, developer or a joint venture could come together to do either of those affordable homeownership through BC Housing's program or streamlined rental. In this specific context of what we're looking at in the amendments to zoning by law, that would be off the table. So there, it would only be open to six story rental. And to go above and beyond that would include, as you mentioned in your presentation, you know, a process that takes a long time and, and can raise costs in housing. So I'm just wondering if you think that above and beyond this, that needs to be included or considered?
I, I think within this, like I said, I think with, uh, those, those are really important programs. And, and in my perspective, I, I work for a market developer. I'm also involved with a not for developer on a volunteer basis. Uh, moving this policy through is, is not going to stop, stop either of those groups from considering, um, opportunities for bigger moves, be it through affordable homeownership or working through available government programs. Um, I, I, I don't think passing this policy is going to be done at the expense of considering those other, other different opportunities.
I understand, but I incentivizing one policy really does incentivize building one form of housing or one type of housing. I'm wondering if you feel that perhaps we would, we would see not only rental streamlined, but do you think other types of affordable housing should also be streamlined? You've made it very clear. You think this should be. I appreciate your comments. I'm just thinking, wondering, do you think that we should also look at streamlining and incentivizing other types of affordable housing in these zones?
Um, I, I, I think, I think that would be something that, that staff, uh, the housing department should be looking at for sure. And I believe they are. Um, I, I, so I, subsequent to this and, and going forward, I, I think that always should be a consideration.
Thanks so much. Really appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, councillor Frye.
Thanks. Hi, Tim. I, I wanted to drill in a bit on the C twos. And we've heard a couple of speakers and I've had some thoughtful correspondence with some architect types uh, around, uh, lot width and maintaining that sort of, um, retail, lively retail sort of variety. Um, in your experience, can, can you make these pencil out on, does it need to be a big lot assembly or multiple lot assembly? Can you make a six story C two work on a, on a fifty foot lot or a even a hundred foot lot?
Good, good question. I, I mean, I, and I, uh, to, to be frank, I mean, my experience with, with the C two and the six story rental has really been, uh, East Hastings and Causel, a, a building rebuilt called Causel. Um, and that's, that was built about, uh, three years ago and I think it's been really successful. That, that was a larger thought lot. It was about a twenty thousand square foot lot. Um, so, so probably more in that hundred and, yeah, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty foot range. Um, we do have a rezoning proposal in, uh, for another six story building at Hastings and Cootney, right adjacent to Cootney Buzz Loop. That, that is a smaller lot. Um, and off the top of my head, I can't tell you exactly how wide it is, but it's a, a smaller lot yield about fifty five rental homes as opposed to the Causel building, which is about ninety four. Um, e- each of which had, would have, uh, ground store, uh, ground floor retail. Um, so that, that, that's kind of, I guess, the limit of, I, I, we haven't looked at doing on a smaller lot than the one at Cootney. Um, but we, we certainly believe we have a good project proposed on that lot size.
Yeah, fair enough. I, I thought I'd ask because I, I know you, you, I, I was familiar with the, the Hastings project and thought maybe you might have some, it's, because I think that's one of the things that we're looking to maybe hopefully see is, you know, some sort of design excellence that maintains some of the, the character of, uh, our retail high streets and, um, and not go big box necessarily. But, um, that's great. Thanks.
If I, if I could just add really quickly, I would say that.
Yeah, please.
Making, ta- taking this approach, I think would enable people to be considering that. You know, uh, being able to go into a development permit phase as opposed to having to carry smaller sites through a longer rezoning period. I, I think that's going to open the opportunity to be considering it more on smaller sites, particularly if, if you have the ability to have some extra height in the retail, which in my experience, you know, big or small users, uh, mom and pop or, or national tenants, uh, uh, higher ceiling in a retail space makes for a more pleasant experience and certainly from a business perspective is more attractive to, to the, the businesses that'll be operating there.
So forgive me, if you could just expand on that a little bit, you're saying because you don't have to go through the sort of the commitment and the uncertainty of a rezoning, this would allow you to be a little bit more creative with the, so. I don't want to put words.
I, I think so. Yeah, a- a- absolutely. And I think also it would enable, um, you know, people that maybe own smaller sites that they're looking at a less daunting process, being able to go right to a development permit. It certainly takes less time to go through and you're coming in with a more specific set of requirements that you can be working directly with the city on. Uh, so I, I think it becomes, um, a more palatable iteration for people that are looking at redeveloping their properties.
Super helpful. Thanks, Tim.
Councillor Weep?
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for coming in today. Um, you talked that this process will remove the cost of about eighteen months of going through civic processes. It will remove parking costs as well as simplified built form that should reduce building costs. Can you talk about how those costs can be translated into affordability through these projects?
Well, I think, I think that the really, maybe the, the key one is just the decision of, of building a condo building versus building a rental building. And, and I think, um, John Stavel touched on it earlier about their decision as, as they can build a four story condo under existing zoning. Um, or the alternative would be to, to go and rezone for a six story rental. And, and, uh, that, that, that is a very difficult, um, financial decision to make in, in favor of rental. I mean, rental is just frankly, does not stack up as well from purely a financial basis to, to condo development. So being able to cut that timeline down on the eighteen months does reduce your holding costs. Being able to, to not go through a rezoning, zoning process and all the different inputs that that entails does help cost. And, and ultimately that could drive a greater level of affordability or, or at least make a, a greater level of affordability feasible from a development perspective.
Okay, so if six story rentals, like you talked about the one on Causel, were able to pencil in previously, why, if we are reducing the costs, how come the performers can't deliver a, um, CAC target contribution or a guaranteed affordability?
Uh, it's, it's six stories that they're really challenging. Um, and I would, you know, I, I guess going to our, our Hastings and, and Cootney example, we, we do have two more MRF projects that are under construction across the street. And, and those are, uh, fourteen story projects that have twenty percent guaranteed for modern incomes or secured for modern incomes. So that, that additional density is really what made those, those, um, affordability targets possible relative to a six story market rental building. And I.
And do you see by.
Sorry.
But.
I, I, I was just going to say that, that, you know, a six story market rental is still very, very difficult to make work. And, and, uh, in, in today's environment, particularly with, with the prospect of, of the realization of, of increasing construction costs, increased construction costs and the prospects of, of interest rates starting to move up again. It, it's, it's a very challenging thing to make work. So we're, we're still really on kind of the edge of the projects being, being able to move ahead or not, uh, with rental construction.
Okay. One of the biggest inputs for some of these projects to show their viability would be the land costs. And we've heard that land costs should not increase, um, or land valuation shouldn't increase. And as this is a pretty broad poll across the city, do you believe that the land values will s- stay at the rate they are at single family home rates? Um, and do you think that would reduce the price for these projects, recognizing that we're opening up a lot more of the city to these type of projects?
I mean, I, I, I can't really comment too much on the land values in the single family neighborhoods. Um, frank, frank, because it's not something we have a ton of experience with. But, yeah, I, in my experience, I don't think we've seen the land values increase dramatically because of these rental only oriented proposals. So I, I don't, I don't believe it would make land values, um, change dramatically. I think it, I think the benefit is going to be, it's going to be able to have more people moving into neighborhoods and, and experience things throughout the city.
From, so from your point of view, when you are doing land assemblies, you aren't seeing people looking for an eight hundred thousand plus increase on land valuations, recognizing that they know the property is in a, an area that can be assembled for this type of use?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, I'm not familiar with the eight hundred thousand dollar example, but.
That was just a comment someone today said that, that we had a project and the properties nearby, or each one of the projects in that land assembly got an eight hundred thousand once we approved the policy. So I'm just wondering, is that something from your professional point of view that you have seen in the market or not?
That, that's something I've observed directly. Um, like I said, we, I don't spend a lot of time on single family, um, assemblies or anything like that. So I can't actually comment.
I appreciate your comments today. Thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Swanson. Up to five minutes.
Yeah, so if you were taking advantage of this, um, rezoning as a builder, would you. Yeah, so if you were taking advantage of this rezoning as a builder, would you build any of the so-called affordable rentals? I think that's about 1,100 for a bachelor, 1,100 a month. Would you build any of those or would you just stick with the market rental?
My understanding of the recommendation being presented tonight is it's about market rental, and that would be our approach. And certainly on a six-story proposal, on a C2 zone, at least the ones that we're involved in, we could not accommodate, you know, a moderate income unit or anything like that. Those type of restrictions are very hard, in our opinion, and difficult to make work at these densities right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions. Appreciate you calling in tonight. Council, before I call the next speaker, I'll just alert you that I have asked the clerk to ask for an extra day for us to extend this public hearing. We are already scheduled to go November 9th from 6 till 10 p.m., but as we've, we only have a half an hour left in this meeting, as we've gone through two meetings and we're not quite happy with our speakers list, I've asked for two additional evenings. So I'll just let you know the second date when the clerks have found one. And we have speaker number 42, Joan Bunn.
Hello?
Hi there, up to five minutes, please. Hi there, up to five minutes, please.
Hi, thanks. I each got a bit garbled by some problems with my computer, so do my best. I'm the sort of person who thinks twice before throwing out even a pair of old socks. I really hate waste. I walk through my neighborhood and imagine these sturdy, strong, often beautifully colored or admirably designed houses with usually several suites inside smashed down by noxious machines leveling it and wrecking the houses and gardens that could have lasted many more decades. This feels like environmental crime. Where will, today I read through all the 500-plus oppose and support submissions. It was clear that many writers, writers, especially those on the support side, did not clearly differentiate between the policies for commercial and residential streets. This was not their fault. The city should never have bundled these two proposals together. Many writers didn't realize the plans they were supporting might result in more housing actually on arterial, which they expressly did not want, than off, or that off arterials meant really just around the corner from arterials. Many of the opposed letters, on the other hand, were specific to their own neighborhoods or those they knew well, which I felt made them more useful as letters to council. They talked about how much they loved their diverse neighborhoods, most with a mixture of renters and owners. Notably, on the off arterial streets, most of the population seems to be renters. That's the off arterials as defined in this submission, in this program. The proposals for off arterials will actually affect renters disproportionately and will tend to displace many renters who are very happy with the houses or portions of houses they live in. I implore you to insist on more creative, less destructive solutions. Many of the homes along nearby streets targeted for zoning changes have been greatly upgraded, rebuilt, or replaced in recent years. These are mostly not worn-out neighborhoods. They are thriving. It is irresponsible to have them destroyed for what may turn out to be less durable, less livable buildings. People are understandably urgently hoping to live somewhere better than noisy streets or faulty inadequate buildings. I don't blame them, but I feel this proposal will not do it. It will not provide the kind of housing many people want such as co-ops, townhouses, or small, more neighborhood-friendly apartments that many people had hoped for. Townhouses and co-ops were excluded by a planner who spoke November 2nd. They wouldn't fit in the plan. People actually want housing deeper into the neighborhoods further from these streets. This is very apparent from the frequent mention of frustration from noise and uninviting streets. Can this be achieved better than by sacrificing street after street of currently modest housing? A letter on the support side actually made my point regarding the environment better than I can. Biologist Julius Setonal made a very eloquent plea for protection of Vancouver's urban forest. He states that the city must, quote, "accommodate the retention of the giant trees that are already in place within the city." He adds that big neighborhood trees are, quote, "imbedded to the mental and emotional health of city residents," and praises, quote, "urban giant trees." He states that, quote, "As a biologist, I cannot overstate the importance of protecting Vancouver's urban forest, especially the largest trees. My concern is that the planners who've proposed these new arterial and off arterial zones have not actually walked the streets painted blue on their maps. For instance, 10th Avenue from Alma to McDonald near my home is filled with dozens of large or verifiable trees. There are in front yards, backyards, as well as the street trees, producing exactly the lethiness so often mentioned as desirable. There are many conifers of great height and a wide variety by the trees, plus the crowning glory of that street, a colonnade of towering cataupas flowering in the spring, full of fluttering green leaves all summer and gold and yellow in the fall. It's not known how much damage to them may happen from housing closer to this and all the digging that will be involved. The city has done no investigation at all and no tally of the number of trees on private property which will be lost throughout Vancouver. The plan will sacrifice too many on us-
Thank you so much.
Oh, that's it.
We're just, we're up to five minutes. Thank you so much for your presentation this evening. There are no questions, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have Brian Colley, speaker number 43. Brian Colley speaking.
Speaker 43 is not on the line.
Thanks very much. We have Bill Teelman, speaker number 44.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart and council.
Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just make two simple points. First is around the issue of public hearings and accountability, which in my view are at the heart of democracy and local government. And I'm concerned, once again, I think this is the third time I've spoken to council this year, about the possibility of losing public hearings where city councillors and the mayor can be held accountable for their votes, can be heard, can make their views known on what affects their neighborhood and their city. And I think a lot of that is extremely important. I'm very, very concerned about that, once again. Second point, very simply, six-story buildings in neighborhood zone right now for four stories is simply wrong and unfair without at least a public hearing and a public vote to hold council members accountable. The shading and the view blockage are significant changes to what homeowners understood when they bought their property or renters decided when they rented their homes. We don't, I live on, sorry, I should have said, I live in Vancouver on West Broadway, one of the major arterials, and people here, my neighbors, talk to about some of these proposals and previously, we don't want to live in a canyon. We're very concerned about the height, the shading, the changes to views, et cetera. And the proposals that are in front of council right now would allow a lot of that or all of that to happen without even public hearings, and that's just simply wrong. Also concerned, and it's outside of this hearing, but the Jericho Lands Project, or as I refer to it, Metro Town by the Sea, we're again seeing the complete loss of neighborhood accountability, responsibility, and not actually thinking about the context of the neighborhoods. The people who live there have, are not opposed to increased density, are not opposed to affordable housing, we're in favor of more affordable housing, but we see just behind me, single-family dwellings, large lots, et cetera, and yet we're told that we should live in a row along West Broadway of six-story or possibly greater. I was interested in the comments of Tim Grant from the developers saying six-story rental is still very difficult and very challenging to make work, and we know that there was previous motions to council for 10 or 12-story buildings in Vancouver along certain arterials in other areas. So I think that if you want to make these kind of major rezoning changes to our neighborhoods, then feel free to put it on the ballot for voters in October of 2022, and we can decide it democratically after a full hearing. And those councils who want to run on six-story or story or 10-story or 12-story buildings in our neighborhoods across the city can put their names forward that way, and we'll let the voters decide, put it on a ballot as a referendum question, as we do with capital projects, let the voters decide this, not a council that has one year left to go in its mandate. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take questions.
Councilor Hardwick.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Councilor.
Public accountability. I'm interested in your statement there. I mean, to me, and I'd also be interested in your thoughts about the provincial government now looking at nixing public hearings in a Broadway around rezonings and eroding democracy, but how should this work? I mean, we're listening, again, going through large numbers of people coming to speak, and there's a big difference between what we hear from residents versus people that are directly or indirectly in the property development industry. So what do we do to restore trust and public accountability from your perspective?
Well, I think, thank you for the question, Councilor. I think that what we need, these public hearings are basically, as I said, at the heart of democracy, and this is as flawed and as challenging, and I, like I should have said at the beginning, I appreciate every councillor and the mayor's time sitting here, listening to a lot of speakers, once again, as you ought to do, but that is essential to our democracy, number one. Number two, there is an imbalance here where many of the speakers tonight and at previous hearings and probably the next hearing will be people who are paid to be there on behalf of the development industry developers, and there's nothing wrong with that. I've worked with developers, I have no problem there. But we don't get to hear many speakers have not been able to attend tonight because they planned their evening around the previous hearing and were not able to attend tonight. And I just, by good luck, I've been able to be here tonight and speak to you at the last moment. I, you know, I think that we have to find a better way to hear out and basically test the waters of the voters and the neighborhoods in the city. And so the, as flawed as it is, the bare minimum to me is a public hearing where people in one neighborhood or another can say we agree or we don't agree, or we, or some agree and some don't agree with a rezoning application, and then council decides in public, and people can be unhappy or happy with your decisions. But that's the kind of the bare minimum, and we're talking about removing that under this and other proposals that have come forward, and that's why I'm particularly agitated about it.
Could you elaborate a little bit more about your idea about having it on the ballot? I mean, we are just under a year away from the next election, and as you observe, we normally have a plebiscite to determine our borrowing capacity. Do you, how would you see that working, out of interest?
Well, I think that if you have major proposals that make significant changes, and I do, and many commentators have, Brian Palmquist, Elizabeth Murphy, others have made in media and social media reports, these are really significant changes. This is not one-spot zoning change. This is a significant change in a massive number of the properties across the city. So if you want to make those kind of changes and you think you have the public support for that, put it to a test by the voters. And we have a unique opportunity, a better-than-usual opportunity with a municipal election coming up, put it on the ballot along with, as you mentioned, plebiscites for funding different borrowing and other schemes. We've had many referendums. I think there's a real problem with the antithesis or anathema towards having referendums and having direct democracy votes on significant issues. We've had it on many issues before. If this is minor, I don't think we'd have this many speakers pro and con. I don't think this would have a hearing that's going on for three days. This is not a minor issue, this is a major issue. And those kind of major issues, you know, I'm willing to fight it out. I'll oppose a bylaw proposal on a referendum in the bylaw in the elections if that's the case, and if I lose, so be it. People will have had their chance to have their say, but to be voting on things after three days of hearings into the evening, no one really sure when it's going to happen and nobody, and many people, I would guess, the majority of Vancouverites don't even know this hearing is going on right now. They would know in an election it was going on.
I think you're about that. Generally, from what we've been hearing, there is a sense that most people are unaware that this is going on and certainly unaware of the broad impact on the city. But I very much appreciate your perspective, and I'd like to have more thought go into the implications. So thank you again.
Councilor DeGenova.
Thanks so much, Bill. I just, I had a question. When we consider this in the context of looking at other types of affordable housing, and I'm being asked to look broadly, not just at one application here, but at affordability, and we did this with duplexes. And as I'm sure you know, you know, myself and some of my colleagues last term, we just couldn't support, you know, parts of this proposal because we weren't sure how this would impact other types of affordable housing. Do you think if we're looking at a citywide policy, aside from all of the consultation, that we shouldn't just go out with one type of affordable housing, that we should be looking at all of the types and the spectrum of affordable housing and how they would work to co-locate and compete with each other, and how the zoning for one wouldn't exclude or push out zoning for another type of housing? Do you think it's important we do that all in one consultation process? If we're going to go through this with, instead of individual applications, that we actually do that first, not just for streamlining rental, but streamlining all of it?
Thank you, Councilor. I think that is a good question. I mean, this is kind of a Rubik's, I'm sorry, this is kind of a Rubik's Cube of rezoning and policy development and questions. And I think that I certainly hope I'm not insulting anyone in the city council today to say that this is very complicated, very complex, and I think for the average voter, average resident, whether they be a homeowner or, it's even more complicated. So I think that the more information and the more knowledge people can have on these issues, the better off we will all be, and you will be in making decisions on city council, and we will be as voters and residents here, because this is not simple stuff. And I can honestly say, and I think some of the questions we've heard from various councillors tonight, as much as I've been able to hear, is that this is extremely, extremely complicated, and it's, you move one piece in this, and things change dramatically. So I think the more comprehensive we can be, also the more comprehensive the consultation can be, the better off we would be.
And I'm just wondering, you don't have to answer this question, but in the context of considering this, I do consider, you know, the move that the previous council made on duplex housing and kind of blanketing that across the city. This isn't blanket policy, but it is wide-reaching, as you did, and the public may not know about that. Do you, do you think that there's a concern that there might be a perception out there that this would be like that move made by the previous vision Vancouver council?
I don't think there's any question about it, and I have, I think that, you know, everyone can do things better, and certainly the previous council is no exception to that. But I think that, you know, I think there's a major democracy deficit, knowledge deficit amongst voters as to what's going tonight in city council and at this public hearing. And I think that, you know, we need to be more consultative and inclusive of our taxpayers and our citizens, residents, whatever their status, renter, homeowner, is, because people just don't really know what's going on, and I think that's really incredibly important to a democracy.
Okay, and just, I won't use all of my time, but is it fair to say that you could possibly support this if there was more consultation and, you know, with the public in general, citywide, and some more time on this, spent on how this fits in with other types of affordable housing? I mean, I'm not trying to ask you if you would support it or wouldn't, but is it hard for you to state that without that consultation?
No, I don't find it hard at all. I have a problem, and people can say you're envy or whatever, but I don't want to live in shadows and in shade on the building where I live, a forced building, which was the rules when I bought it, as it was for everyone else that lives here, and I think other people in our neighborhood would say the same thing. If you want to change it, then there's, I mean, I could be on the losing side of that. That's democracy, I understand that, but to make a decision late at night in a council hearing that will affect me and my neighbors and other neighbors and people all across the city without them even knowing it happened is wrong. That's my biggest point.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you sharing all of that.
Thank you. Councilor D'Amato, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, Bill. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of questions. Councilor DeGenova, that's one of mine, but you referenced the complexity of this, and I certainly kind of observed that, not the complexity, but it is confusing to residents right now. But I am, yes, I've been trying to hone in on this with residences, particularly with the recommendation around C2 areas, which is much smaller in scope when you look at the map and the recommendation of allowing six-story rental without rezonings currently. We have that with Strata at four stories. How do you feel about that? Or is it go back to the same premise of there hasn't been adequate kind of consultation and engagement and that the public needs to have an, residents have to have an opportunity to participate and have a say? And that the public needs to have, residents have to have an opportunity to participate and have a say in their neighbourhoods?
Thank you, Counselor. I mean, I had to search to find a map which indicated to me, and I think I'm reasonably knowledgeable about city politics and politics, exactly what a C2 was and where it was. And I eventually found it, you know, on a social media site. But, I mean, why don't we run advertising as a city to say, "This is what we're going to be talking about. This is the issue. These are the motions in front of council." I mean, to look, and this is not a knock on city staff, we do a remarkable job under difficult circumstances. But, you know, I don't think, again, most people have no idea they live in a C2 area. Just no idea at all, or that this motion is in front of council, or that things could dramatically change if this motion passes in favour. So, you know, I don't, I'm kind of a snitched at how much could potentially happen in the city without most of the people who actually pay the taxes and vote, even knowing it happened, until it's afterward, and then they find out.
Thanks for clarifying that, Bill. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. And Counsel, we are at quarter to ten, so we can go for one more speaker, and then we'll call it a night and resume on November ninth at 6:00 PM. Speaker number forty-six is Celine McRae-Hamdy.
Speaker forty-six is not on the line.
Okay, let's try speaker number forty-seven, Michael Louis.
One moment, Mayor Stewart. Speaker is on the line. We're just seeing if there's a technical difficulty.
Is that Michael Louis or Celine?
Hello?
Oh, hi, there's Michael Louis.
Hi.
Hi there. Head up to five minutes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the work that you've done on this proposal. I am in favour of it. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I'll qualify my comments because I'm not qualified as many of the others as being developers and architects. I'm a CA, so it's the numbers. So mine will be very numbers-oriented. I'm in favour of the proposal as put forth. And the reason is, to gain affordability within the city of Vancouver, I believe that we need to increase the supply. And this is only a partial solution to accomplish that, but I believe that it will be at least a step towards that. If, a couple of statistics that I am aware of is that thirty-four thousand people came to BC. I'm not sure how many exactly came to Vancouver, but I believe quite a number of them did. And the other statistic is the thirteen thousand workers that are entering Vancouver to work at some of the tech companies. All of these people need accommodation. So in the absence of new accommodation, where will these tens of thousands of people be living? And so I believe that this is a necessary step in the direction of adding to the supply. The second is, or second point I'd like to make is, in relation to the city, and this will just bear out by adding to the rental stock, is that the tax base of the city will actually, I would think, go up because the values of the properties, by virtue of having the rent properties on them, will have increased substantially. So I would think that the overall tax base will increase for the city of Vancouver. And of course, all the other, the other good spending that will come from it with the additional number of people in the city of Vancouver. So those are the two major points I wanted to make. So I thank you for the time. That's really all I have to say.
I've got, just, I don't see any of the councillors on the queue for questions, but I have a quick question for you. How important is climate change to you?
Climate changes is important, and I think that the city has addressed that with the need to do the, I can't remember the name of the type of design or where you are. I think it's called passive house. And I believe that that is now an obligation of new rental, purpose-built rental buildings to be a passive house design. So I believe that's a step in the direction of working towards some climate change. And I think we have to lead by example. As citizens of Vancouver and citizens of the world, we have to demonstrate that we are in support of that. So very much, I'm in support of that.
Okay, thanks so much for your time. I don't see any other questions for you, so we'll. Clerks, it looks like I've kind of undershot a bit. We have twelve minutes left, so I will ask if Oliver South is still on the line at speaker number forty-eight.
Yes, we're just checking. One moment, please. Yes, speaker forty-nine is on the line.
Speaker number forty-nine, Chris Flareledge?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks, Speaker. Please go ahead up to five minutes.
Thank you. I'm opposed to this proposal, not entirely. I'm not opposed to six-story buildings on true major arterials within a few blocks of grocery shopping and other shopping. I've been a resident of Vancouver since nineteen eighty-four. My wife and I are owner of a single-family home in the Cedar Cottage area. And we've owned our home for the last twenty-two years. I love Vancouver for its livable quality, the ability to live in a single-family residential area close to work, community centres and parks, as well as having reasonable public transportation options. The fact that parks and community centres have not been overcrowded to date, and that until about five years ago, developments seemed to emphasise build it fit within the character of the neighbourhood in terms of scale and design. I think that the current proposal sacrifices much of that. For instance, it will allow six-story buildings in the middle of single-family neighbourhoods far from grocery and shopping and major transportation routes. A speaker the other night mentioned that potentially you could have a six-story building on Twelfth Avenue across from Kit's High School. This is clearly a residential area. It's hardly a major artery, arterial, and yet you could have this building that is in no proportion to the neighbourhood. And the same could be said by way of example on Victoria Drive between Eighteenth and Kingsway, if you were to punk down a six-story building there. Under this current proposal, there is no guarantee that projects will be located within a block or two of shopping areas, or even on arterials as opposed to off arterials. In fact, the proposals will lead to the most haphazard kind of development. If the goal is to reduce the use of the automobile, then development should be concentrated within a block or two of existing shopping and transportation hubs. The question is, do we really need to change the character of Vancouver's traditional single-family neighbourhoods by allowing six-story apartment buildings on arterials of this tier? From the presentation made by staff, it appears, and I hope I'm correct in this, that they anticipate that approximately four hundred units will be built per year, or about four thousand over ten years. It appears that the average development approved under previous similar programmes contain about eighty to a hundred units. And that, based on what we heard tonight, and that you require about five lots to do this, five sitting lots for about twenty thousand square feet was the figure mentioned earlier. So that really means that if there are only four hundred units being built a year, that we really only need about twenty-five sitting lots. We don't need all these areas to be subject to development and subject to the speculation which will attend that in terms of, undoubtedly, the prices of the properties that are actually within these zones will rise dramatically. I think that while a lot has been said about, and I'll also mention that Brian Palmquist in his article in City Hall Watch indicates that under the prior secure rental policy, about three hundred units per year have been developed. So the proposal really is that for the sake of about a thousand people who may or may not have ever been Vancouver residents, that we're drastically going to change the nature of the city. And there really is no evidence that this policy is going to produce any more supply than the previous policy because really what developers are up against is the financial implications. That is, it's difficult to make it when the rents are controlled. And that, and the rents are controlled in these buildings, even if it's market rent. And it may be that if they could charge more, then they would build more. The report assumes without any real evidence that building apartment buildings ten or fifteen minutes from a grocery store will have a major impact on people's use of their vehicles. It assumes that people earning fifty to a hundred thousand will either not own vehicles, not use them to go grocery shopping, no matter how much it's raining, or that they won't take their kids to hockey use and using vehicles.
Speaker, we're just at the five-minute mark, so I'll just say thank you so much for
That went quickly. Thank you.
It goes fast.
Yeah.
Thanks very much. You don't have any questions, but I'll thank you for calling in this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We don't really have enough time to start another speaker, so with that, we'll recess until this public hearing, until November ninth at 6:00 PM. And I'll ask the clerks, do you have a second date as well, just in case?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. So Counsel, we'll get back to you as soon as possible and let the public know for the other day that we need. Okay, so thanks very much, Counsel, for your work this evening. Thanks to everybody who participated, and thank you for those. And, okay, so we'll talk to you next week.
Thanks, Mayor.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Night.